Benny.
I feel so discomfited today. I don't know why.
Okay, I thought we didn't have our staff.
Do you hear my name?
Yeah.
Oh, good. You guys ready?
Sure.
Okay, here we go, boys and girls, friends and roommates, men and women. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this Monday, the 27th, meeting of the Lincoln City Council. Let's all stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent meditation. Okay, in accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber, over there. The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. This is the important part, listen to this. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may make a short rebuttal. Each speaker may begin by stating their name, address, and whether they're speaking in favor of or opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the city council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, that's today, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, let me do that again. Prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not listed on the agenda for that date, nor planned for a future agenda. Teresa, would you please call the first item of business?
Yes, and just a reminder to the individuals giving testimony, to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and to sign in on the pink sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Is there anyone here in the chamber that would like to speak on these agenda items? Welcome, gentlemen.
I'm Dan Sloan, 405, D-A-N-S-L-O-A-N, 405 South 28th Street, Lincoln.
My name is Herb Friedman, 3800 Normal Boulevard, 68502.
Welcome, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Sloan.
Mr. Schob, and members of the city council. I am the current president of the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees, will be going off the board. My place will be taken, I'm honored to say, by Mr. Dan Sloan. And I want to introduce the council to Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. I think I've been up here a few times before, but it is a pleasure to be here. I know Herb has given tremendous leadership over the last seven years, and I'm honored to have a chance to step into his shoes.
Thank you. Further questions from the council, for this appointee?
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness.
To sir, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
This is the consent agenda portion, and there are several items here. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to an item on our consent agenda? I see no one coming.
All right, we can vote on these items. Items one, A and B were introduced by Jane.
So moved. Thank you, Roy. Like a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Christensen, second by Gaylord Baird, discussion of the consent agenda items, one and two. I guess A and B. Hearing done, would you call the roll, please?
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Then items two, A through I, were introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion, please call the roll.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then, our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item four, A, manage your application of Jason Williams for Greenfields at 7900 South 87th Street.
Good evening.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Jason Williams, 7900 South 87th, S-J-A-S-O-N-W-I-L-L-I-A-N-S.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about your application. What brings you here tonight?
I'm taking over as a manager at Greenfields, out on Highway Two, and we're just trying to bring everything fresh and do some new menu items, so.
I understand. Are there questions from the council of this testifier? Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this issue? Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Teresa, what's our four B?
Item four B is application of nonprofit hub foundation for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 90 feet by 140 feet on 14th Street from O to P Streets on September 21st from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and September 22nd from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Hello.
Who goes first?
I can speak. This is for Lincoln Calling event. Last year, we partnered with Jakes to pull this STL. This year, we thought we'd use one of our nonprofit partners, which is The Foundry, which is where we do a lot of setup for the festival, but also, we were hoping that we would split the profits to better both of the fest, both the festival and The Foundry.
Yes, I think that here, I think that this, the Lincoln Calling event is something that is quite important to downtown, especially for the young professionals, and because it is in our front yard essentially, it's also beneficial to us to have it there, so.
I believe The Foundry will be submitting their liquor license in the next couple weeks, too. They will be opening up a coffee shop and bar downtown, so we'll be helping promote that new business.
Gentlemen, I'm sorry, I think we were missed, you didn't introduce yourself.
Yeah, right. I thought we were out of line here.
Yeah, I kind of, that's my fault, that's all on me. Would you?
And I didn't swear either.
I don't think there's any swearing in, but state your name for record, yeah.
Randy Hawthorne, H-A-W-T-H-O-R-N-E, and 126 North 14th Street, number one, 68508.
My name is Spencer Munson, S-P-E-N-C-E-R-M-U-N-S-O-N. I reside at 1628 East Street.
Thank you. And now we're back on track. Are there questions from the council for these two testifiers? Thank you both. Would anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this agenda item? Hearing done, I think we're done with the.
I would move, Mr. Chair, the approval of items four A and four B.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilman Eskridge, hard name. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing done. Teresa, would you call the roll? Yes.
Camp? Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Next then is our public hearing resolutions. Item five, A, is approving Lucky's Lounge as a Keno satellite located at 1101 West Bond Street.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Chelsea Norval, C-H-E-L-S-E-Y-N-O-R-V-A-L, 166 Mormon Trail, and applying for the Keno license for new owner at Lucky's Lounge in Grohl.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council of this testifier? Would anyone in the audience like to speak about this Keno license? Ms. Norval, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa, we're settling right along. I feel like I've put you in a spot where you're a little.
Nope, you're okay.
Okay, then let's go to five B then.
Five B is accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for August 1st through the 15th, 2018. Come on down.
Yes, please. Does anyone in the audience like to speak to this agenda item?
Good afternoon, council, these are just some more.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Richard Clough, C-L-O-U-G-H. I reside at 2223 North 28th Street, and the zip code is 68503. I'm new to Nebraska, been here, back here for two years, and I had the unfortunate experience of having a city tree fall on my mother's property. It damaged the fence and a roof to a garage. I submitted a claim for it, and I'm here because the law department declined the claim, and I'm here to rebut the reasons. So, we're seeking a monetary settlement in the amount of $1,221 for damages incurred on our property during a recent thunderstorm on June 8th, June 9th, from a diseased, diseased fallen tree, which was located on the city property just on the other side of our fence, located on North 28th Street and Leighton Avenue. We are on receipt of a letter from the city in response to our claim, denying our claim for payment because the subject tree did not have visible decay or show signs of internal decay. I was told that this would work.
Yes, it takes it a moment, but just. There we go.
Our disagreement includes, there are visible symptoms of the tree as far back as the year before, when I first moved back here. Some of the visible symptoms are a loss of leaves, which this was taken in June, June 17. You can see the tree, this is in June, they're supposed to be all in bloom, green leaves, and not drooping, or empty branches, or wilting leaves, or what's weird, if you look down here at the bottom, you can see that the root, where the base of the trunk meets the ground, you can see that it's scarred and it's discolored, and that would be root rot. There's a scientific name for it, and I'm not going to try to pronounce it, but anyway, all these symptoms, loss of leaves, dead and dry branches without leaves, drooping, wilting dead limbs, roof rot, which is evident by all of the above, plus the trunk splitting, swelling, scarring, and discoloration. After that, we witnessed the removal of this tree, and the tree that was adjacent to it during the last month or two by the city. I had an opportunity to speak with the crew following the trees, and they confirmed that these were both diseased trees. We consequently removed a much bigger tree for the same reasons on our property in the alleyway. Anyway, this experience brought me more aware of my surroundings, and it made me ask the question of who and what department is responsible for the recurring monitoring of preventive and scheduled care, and removal of debris for this area, including the North 28th Street and Leighton Avenue roads, the public parking spaces, including the public sidewalk, the bike trail, that's all adjacent around Fleming Fields and Woodside Mini Park. If I can, I'll go over these pictures, because I believe picture is more than a thousand words. This is the tree that was on our property, it's like three times the height of the two city trees. We took that down, because I didn't want that thing falling down on the property. This is the damage that was done by the city tree to the fence and the roof, and you can see that was taken June 14th. And you can see the symptoms, the branches without the leaves, the wilting leaves, the discoloration leaves, some branches without the leaves, and some of the discoloration of the branch, the trunk's not in that picture. This is just a quick shot of all the damage to the fence, the inside of the fence, the little, a way shot of where the tree, the branch hit the roof and the fence. This is more evident, the tree, the tree was diseased, and you can see here in this picture where there's some scarring and some discoloration of the trunk. When the branch broke, now it's very obvious that the tree was diseased, because it's all hollowed out, and well, it just looks thick. And then, again, the trees and the, or the limbs and the branches and the leaves, all discolored. This is a closer picture of that. And then this is the tree that was adjacent to the one that fell on our property that they, I think it was a couple of weeks later, that they decided to take down. It looks healthy, except if you look really close, you have branches that have no leaves on it. The branches are very dry and breaking off, the branches are wilting, the leaves are, make, they can, you know, make it hit, but down here in the bottom where the ground is.
One minute.
You can see the discoloration of the trunk, which is indicating root rot. Well, a couple of days after they took the first one down, the one that was damaged, they came, the forestry came by, took this one down, I said, "Why are you guys taking that tree down?" It's diseased, just like the other one was. So that's my point. I'm just asking for the claim for the damage.
Are there questions from council? I'm sorry, Councilman Lamb.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today. There was a couple of things you mentioned, I just wanted to be clear on. One is you said that it came down during a thunderstorm. Did I hear that?
The branch, that branch that showed against the fence.
Okay.
That gave way and came down on the fence. The tree, the majority of the tree was still standing.
Okay. The other question was, you mentioned that you had taken some pictures back in June of 2017. Did you make a claim, or did you report to the city your concerns at that time?
No, again, I'm a recent transplant here, and I thought, and it's not my responsibility to take care of the city's property, and I was, just didn't have any, you know, I'm just not going to go around and say, "Well, this bunch, you know, this needs to be taken care of." But since you asked that, I have taken pictures and have been in contact with the Parks and Recreation lady, and I took some pictures, if you'd like me to show them, I can, of negligent and, you know, my interpretation of a favorable responsibility for taking care of the grounds around Fleming Field and Woodside Park, including the street sidewalks and so forth, and I have those available.
Yeah, I'm not requesting those.
Okay. Other questions from the council?
Could we have staff?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Someone from Parks and Recreation comes?
Well, probably the law department.
Or the law department, yes.
Jeffrey Patrick, city attorney. Let me go ahead and put these pictures out there, similar to what he's already shown. You might have noticed that we're getting, we've had some seasons where you get a lot of pothole claims. Right now, we seem to be getting a number of tree claims, and I think an arborist would tell you that's because of the rainy cycle we've gone through the last couple of years. The trees are growing more, more foliage, and then you get more trees drop. This is a little bit unusual, because a lot of the tree claims that we've seen have been street trees, where you see a branch fall, and unfortunately happens to fall on somebody's car or pickup that's parked along the street. This tree was actually in a lot that's owned and managed by Urban Development, and is mowed regularly by the Public Building Commission. But as far as inspecting the tree regularly, taking care of the tree, I think that it's fair to say that nobody is. But it's also fair to say that nobody reported any damage with any disease, or problem, or threat from this tree, and when you look at these two pictures, you can see why no one would, because this tree, as you see it there, has a lot of foliage on it. It's basically a healthy tree from all appearances. Now, when the branch broke off, and you looked at the trunk, then you can see that there was internal rot, but because it's internal rot, even if it had been inspected, no one would have been able to see that internal rot. And so, this tree, like, this tree claim, like many of the tree claims that come before you, it's a question of, was the city negligent? Did the city have notice? And since there was no evidence that anyone had noticed that this branch might fall, the city was not in any obligation to go and cut this tree down, or take down, in this case, a significant tree limb. With that, I'd be willing to answer any other questions.
Any additional council questions from Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Yeah.
Councilman Esquish.
So, equating this to the pothole scenario.
Yes.
This is akin to a situation where somebody would encounter a pothole, have damaged their vehicle, but nobody had reported it. So the city didn't have notice about this situation, is that what you're saying?
That's exactly right. The city is negligent if we knew of a threat which resulted, caused damage, in a manner which we had the knowledge, a period of time passed where a reasonable person, reasonable city would have reacted and cured the harm prior to causing damage. And not only was there no reasonable period, there couldn't have been, because we never received notice. And I'm not sure that, when you look at that tree, and how healthy it appeared with the leaves on it at the time it fell, if even if our arborist would have gone out there, if they would have said, "We need to cut this tree down."
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can rebuttal if you'd like.
Yes.
I'd rebuttal. The tree does show signs of disease. The attorney also mentioned that that lot is mowed regularly, except where, except where the two trees were, the two trees were right here at the end of the west side of that lot, right adjacent to the alley. This brush here is what has grown from just ground level all the way up to probably eight feet now. It's not touched. It hasn't been touched by the city or the mowers, and that's, those roots are what strangled those two trees, and made the disease come from the internal root rot. So, I mean, if the mowers were out there every two weeks, like the attorney says, then they should have noticed that the trees were being diseased, or they should have noticed that this brush was not being taken care of, or took care of it.
Any questions? Thank you. See, we're still in the public hearing, claims against the city portion. Would anyone else like to testify on this agenda item? Hearing done, who else coming forward? Teresa, can we move to our next agenda item?
Next is item five, C, a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering to study an interconnection between Lincoln's and the Metropolitan Utilities District's water systems for providing the purpose of additional water supply capacity to the Lincoln Water System.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Steve Owen with the Department of Transportation and Utilities, Lincoln Water System. I'm joined today by Dave DeBoer with Metropolitan Utilities District. Mr. DeBoer serves as the Vice President of Marketing and Rates for MUD, and he is here to address any questions that you might have of the district. A little commentary about how we got to bringing this agreement forward, and I want to first clearly state that Lincoln has an abundant supply of water, of good quality water for its customers. In fact, since 2012, we've increased our summer capacity by over 30% with the addition of two large collector wells in our system. Together, these wells can supply over 30 million gallons of water a day during normal river conditions. As we look ahead, the Lincoln Water System will continue to expand and increase its well field using its existing Platte River source. And I should mention that water conservation is also a big part of water supply for the city of Lincoln. Since the early 1980s, we've seen a 30% decrease in per capita water use, and average, annual average water use for the city of Lincoln has remained almost constant since, along with increased growth in the city. So, water supply planning, it's an ongoing process for every large water utility. City of Lincoln does it, MUD does it. And our municipal water system dates back to the 1880s, where Lincoln installed its first well, sort of by present-day Sixth and F Street. And since that time, we have placed wells along the Antelope Valley Corridor, kind of in that area of present-day Lincoln Children's Zoo. Since that time, those wells have been abandoned, and in the early 1900s, we started to plan for another water source, and that's what brought us then to the Ashland Well Field, along with a 36-inch pipeline that is still in service today for the city of Lincoln. We'll continue to expand that well field. That well field has capacity for us up through at least 2040. And so, the study that we're talking about today is just sort of another step in that whole process of water supply planning for the city of Lincoln. This is not a new idea. This was mentioned as an option in our 2014 Water Facilities Master Plan. We have certainly had discussions with MUD about this idea. We also are looking at going to the Missouri River in the future with a new well field and pipeline. So it just seems natural, it just seems intuitive, that we look at another water utility that's close by that has sufficient capacity for us to connect to. So the agreement before you today is really just an initial step in looking at the technical, logistical, and financial issues that are involved in making this connection, and obtaining an increment of future supply for Lincoln. The agreement establishes an equal partnership between the two utilities for purposes of conducting the study. Cost of the agreement is just under $49,000 for the city of Lincoln. It's an equal cost, so that is the same cost that MUD would be incurring as part of this study. And the results of the study would provide direction for both utilities on whether it's a feasible option for us to continue having this discussion. So with that, I'll open it up for questions, either to myself or Dave.
Questions for these testifiers? Councilman Eskridge.
Yes, thank you. So, for those of us up here who are not engineers, water's water, but you get water from the Missouri and water from underground at the Platte, and how do they mix? Do you have to look at the combination, and is this a technical thing, or is it simple?
Yeah, well, part of this agreement is certainly looking at water chemistry. Do the two waters blend well? Is the chemistry such that we won't cause problems in our system? And we've already kind of started that process by looking from a high level at some of the chemistry. We've actually had a taste testing contest, or contest, I guess you would say, just to determine the aesthetics of blending the two waters, and in that simple process, we certainly haven't identified any issues. But this study will address, will address looking at the water chemistry between the two utilities.
Yeah, and I would just concur. So during that taste test, before we even got forward to even looking at whether or not this study made sense, we wanted to see how our water co-mingled with both the city of Lincoln and with the water treatment plants at MUD. So we did, we hosted up a different variety of blends that each of us could test and witness in terms of the water chemistry and what it might look like. And Steve's exactly right. Part of the recommendations and part of the follow-up of the study, we'll put that in detail.
Very good.
Councilman Lamb.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that our water blends well. My question was, what you mentioned about whether there was sufficient capacity, what other things are the study, is the study going to look at as compared to, for instance, the Missouri River option?
Yeah, so this.
Not even in the consideration, I'm sorry.
So this study will focus on that connection, interconnection with MUD. Again, water chemistry, where are the favorable points of connection, identifying a conceptual route for the pipeline, all of that, then will translate into developing a very high-level cost component. We'd also be looking at the financial issues behind such a project. Obviously, if we would ever enter into a. Obviously, if we would ever enter into an agreement with the M U D, there's a financial component for both sides of that. What we'll be able to do, so we're really not looking at the Missouri River well field development as part of this study, but what we'll be able to do is take the costs from this study and begin to compare that with Lincoln going out and developing that, that well field along the Missouri River. There's a thought that, that, you know, getting an increment of supply from M U D would delay that, that process.
Thank you.
Councilwoman G- sorry.
So maybe just, in addition to the water chemistry and the routing of the, the mains and the pump stations and the diameters, another piece of this will also include some of the modeling. And so one of the, one of the factors that Steve and Donna were very critical of is to make sure we had capacity to move water from the Missouri River. And so that modeling piece on our distribution side will, will give us those results as well.
Councilwoman Gaylor-Bird?
Thank you. Let me speak to my question, which was, do you have sort of initial thoughts on how long M U D might have excess capacity in its system and what the duration of a partnership could, could feasibly look like without compromising your end of the equation?
Yeah, so at M U D, we have a peak water day of about two hundred and twenty-four million gallons per day. Our capacity right now is a little over three hundred million. So we've got quite a bit of excess capacity that we believe will take us down the road in a long-term plan going forward. But certainly, Councilwoman, that is exactly part of what we'll evaluate as part of the study, is what our long-term plans would be and how that might blend with the long-term plans of the city of Lincoln.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp?
Thank you both, gentlemen. Since Omaha is between us and Missouri River, are we going to run into some challenges someday where Omaha says, "This is our water and we're the gatekeeper," and whereas Lincoln is saying, "We need to get some of that water"?
Yeah, so, uh, you speak, you speak a very critical point. And, uh, the way that we would always construct a, a position like this is very similar to what we have with our other communities. So in Omaha, we have seven other communities that we provide water to. So there's Bellevue and, and Ralston and La Vista and Bennington and Fort Calhoun and Carter Lake. All those communities are on the same exact rate schedules as the city of Omaha. And so the, to the effect that, that the city of Lincoln would be one of those communities who'd have the same result as the rest of those communities.
So someday, we could become customers of M U D?
Very much so.
We don't want your sanitary system, though.
Yeah, C S O does not come along for the ride for this one. No, but, but certainly that is another attribute. It's part of the financial piece that I think Steve was suggesting. What makes sense for how these two systems might come together? And what are the situations around how they should come together?
We have concerns with Iowa across the river and the avulsion that occurred with Carter Lake.
With the what, with Carter Lake?
Carter Lake was formed and Missouri shifted channels.
Yes, so I, I don't know that, that there were any issues with that. We provide wholesale water to the city of Carter Lake now, and I don't believe that was any kind of a problematic situation.
Thank you.
And Councilman Camp, you, you bring up a great point. Um, you know, in our two thousand fourteen master plan, we put a value on developing that Missouri River well field of one point two billion dollars, uh, in, in two thousand forty, uh, costs. And so I think we've been pretty free that for the city of Lincoln to embark on something like that in the future, uh, it will probably take a regional, uh, flavor to it. Um, we don't know. Some of us probably won't see that happen. But certainly, that kind of a cost and that kind of, uh, uh, infrastructure that would have to be, uh, put in place is, is pretty big and requires some different partners, very likely.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? I see no one moving, so here we go. Teresa, the next agenda item, please.
All right. Next is item five D, approving a resolution to maintain the current configuration of South Thirteenth Street between Lincoln Mall and South Street.
Okay, so, public hearing on this agenda item?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Christensen reminded me that there will, we will take public testimony, and I will talk about the rules again in just a moment, but there's also, will be offered a motion to delay on this when we get to the voting session. And that will be delayed with another public hearing, so you will be able to testify tonight. And at the next time, if the motion is passed, and we have a second hearing, you'll be able to testify at that time also. Now, the one thing I want to say before we start is, each testifier gets five minutes. Uh, as we read earlier, those in favor should come first, and then those in opposition, please give us your name and your position on the issue. Uh, the clerk has a five-minute timer. She sets it for four minutes and it beeps. That means you have one minute left. If you wish to testify when that beep goes off, that would be a good time to come forward and prepare for your next testimony. And then I'll announce one minute, and then at the end of the one minute, also, your time is called, and we will... But, um, just, just for me, how many people are here to testify? Would like to come to the microphone and speak on the Thirteenth Street issue? Okay.
Mr. Chairpoint of Order?
Yes.
Would the applicant like an opportunity to explain or introduce the resolution or?
No, we're good. We're gonna, we're, I think we're gonna delay this with public testimony, but...
I was kind of waiting for that too, but he kind of, he kept saying, "Start talking," so, yeah. Would you like to speak to the item before we, would anyone?
No, usually the applicant or introducer.
Yes.
You know, a situation like this, we, where it's anticipated to be carried over just for the benefit of those in the audience, and sometimes we even limit it to just one bite of the apple we're either doing now or later. But I think it might be appropriate for us to go ahead and vote, take a motion to delay this, and vote so the members of the audience would know that, and it may impact some of them, or just as a courtesy.
I'm willing to make that motion to delay, put it on indefinite pending.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Lamb and a second by Councilman Camp to place this item on pending indefinite.
Who needs an explanation, though?
Yes, now, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Sure, we received, uh, communication today that, um, asking us to delay, um, action until the downtown strategic plan recommendations are finalized. And, um, the email indicated that the downtown strategic plan update, the consultants will be making recommendations that could further constrict north-south traffic into and out of downtown. And they have, they're preliminarily, uh, have seven pillar projects, including one on Ninth, Tenth, Eleventh, Sixteenth, and Seventeenth. And so they've just asked us to lay, delay on Thirteenth Street, uh, until all downtown plans are, uh, finalized, and basically the recommendations. So I think that that's important to, to honor that, and we want to hear from everyone who's here to testify tonight, and certainly, uh, those who may testify when this does come up again, once we've received those finalized plans.
Okay, we're currently in the discussion portion of the motion to delay. Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, if we could have, uh, David Carey come-
Mr. Carey, would you come forward and help us?
Also a point of clarification. Typically, when we, uh, delay an item, if you speak on it that night, you cannot speak on it the next time unless it's new information.
David Carey with the Planning Department?
Hello, Mr. Carey.
Just in terms of, of a date, approximate date, do we know when the presentation would be made on the downtown master plan?
We don't have a specific date yet. The intention is for that plan to be completed before the end of this calendar year. It is possible, uh, depending on the speed at which we're able to complete the study, that it might go into the new year. Uh, but the intention is for it to come forward, um, to both Planning Commission and the City Council by the end of the calendar year.
Councilwoman?
The resolution we're looking at today is, um, asking for a reversal of a decision that has already been made and approved, the configuration and changes with Thirteenth Street. Have the consultants been planning their, taking the feedback from the community and making their recommendations to the city with this, um-
Resolution?
revised plan for Thirteenth Street that has been approved already in mind? Would there be some reason why, uh, they wouldn't have taken it into consideration as they make their recommendations? Already have taken it into consideration?
Uh, I-
And I'd like to hear from Public Works Structure as well on this issue.
Uh, I appreciate the question because I, and maybe, uh, just a point of clarification. The, the downtown master plan is not taking into consideration Thirteenth Street south of Lincoln Mall. Um, so it's really focused on what we all consider more of the true downtown. Uh, so as far as Thirteenth Street, um, yes, it's taken into consideration what might be done or what it might propose to be done on Thirteenth Street through downtown. It does not take into account, uh, the project that Public Works has designed and worked on, uh, to date, which is, I think, the expectation of what this evening's hearing was on. So that, I just make sure everybody's aware of that. So the downtown plan will not necessarily speak to Thirteenth Street south of Lincoln Mall.
Just speaking to, this, Mickey Esposito, Director of Transportation and Utilities, just speaking to process. This is an approved project in the C I P without action of the council. To, to take some action to delay, actually delay the project or keep it status quo, keep the street status quo, I would look at that as a green light to proceed with the project as set forth in our C I P. It is a budgeted item. The other consideration is that December sixth, I believe, is the grant deadline to expend the money for this neighbor, neighborhood improvement project. So if you're looking at delay, um, there's a certain timeline in which to spend the neighborhood dollars is, is my understanding. So just keep in mind, um, that grant expiration.
Councilman Eskridge?
And do you recall how much that grant is?
I believe it's in the range of forty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
It's a hundred and fifty total.
Oh, it's, okay. It's a hundred and fifty total for the grant, and then forty thousand of it is used for the traffic improvements.
And it's, it was anticipated that this work would be done this calendar year?
This, this fall.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. So, um, are you saying then that because today's, the resolution before us is to keep it as it is, that if we delay a vote on this particular resolution, then narrowing it to three lanes and two bike lanes will go forward?
The status of the council's current action, uh, is the approval of the C I P two budget sessions ago. So in the twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen C I P, this, this body approved this project. And if you don't actually take action to, to delay or change the C I P, the process is the process. I'm, I'm just telling you, this is an approved project in the C I P. So without, without action from the city council to, to delay the C I P, um-
But the C I P has capital approval of projects involving city funds, and we have no city funds involved in this particular project?
Um, we have city staff working on this project. We have, uh, traffic engineering who will be striping this project. So absolutely, there's city funds attached to the project.
So if I understand you correctly, then in order to delay this for purposes of having the downtown strategic plan, um, waiting for those recommendations, we would actually need to vote in favor of the resolution that's in front of us today?
You ask to put it, your motion is to put it on indefinite pending.
Right, but if I put that on indefinite pending, will, will the Thirteenth Street project as currently planned go forward?
Remember that the question is to keep, the question in front of this body is to keep the street the way it is.
Correct.
And that will not have, that action will not have taken place if you put it on indefinite pending. And so what you have is a C I P that's been approved, a project that's been approved.
I see.
So I'm just trying to, from a technical standpoint, putting it on indefinite pending, the question before you is, to keep it status quo, you have a, you have a conflict-
Okay.
-with what's been approved and what yet hasn't been approved. So indefinite pending doesn't really solve your, your issue.
Can, uh, you, please continue. Can I just confirm then, what, what we're told is that the, um, further constru- uh, the recommendations that could further constrict north-south traffic into and out of downtown contains a lane reduction on Ninth Street for easier pedestrian crossing, a Tenth Street lane reduction for pedestrian crossing, an Eleventh Street lane reduction for a linear park, a Sixteenth Street lane reduction for a bike path, and a Seventeenth Street lane reduction for a bike path.
Um, we have our traffic engineers here to define the project scope for you. If you would like, I'd ask Lonnie Berklin to come up, and he can present that information to this body. Um, if, if you're asking specifically about the project scope, we're, we have people here to testify.
I have a question somewhat related to Councilwoman Lamb, and then Councilman Camp has some question. Councilwoman Lamb is reading from a letter that says the downtown strategic plan. I've also heard people refer to the downtown master plan. First off, are you aware of this letter? Have you seen this?
I've not seen that letter.
And what is the difference between the two labels? Are they different organizations?
Well, I, I think it's referring to the same thing, but it, what it is, is the downtown master plan. And then it's a process that's underway currently. Uh, concepts are under discussion. We're not complete, haven't completed that process. Uh, there is intention to have another public meeting to talk about the findings of that process. We've begun those discussions, uh, last week. Those discussions really got underway. Uh, and that is the process that I mentioned earlier would not be done probably until the end of the calendar year. Um, so that, that, that downtown master plan has ideas in it for traffic flow in downtown. Has not been finalized yet, and, and I would more, more to the point say that the specifics of what will happen on any particular street would need to be, have further study by both the Public Works Department as well as, um, potentially just a, a project study and, and contract. So as far as this, the, the specifics of what's going to happen on a street, any particular street in downtown, that's still in a discussion right now. Uh, so we don't have that plan adopted.
Before I yield to Councilman Camp, and you defined downtown, the southern border of downtown is Lincoln Mall?
The, for the purpose of Thirteenth Street, Lincoln Mall is a demarcation point. But, uh, the study itself for downtown goes to G Street. That is, that is that limitation.
Councilman Camp?
Yeah, I think the purpose of the letters and correspondence we received is to have a coordinated approach here so that whatever, uh, however we improve the bike system, that it's done in a coordinated way. And by going ahead on Thirteenth Street, when, as was mentioned, there are a number of other north-south streets being considered as well as east-west, it may be getting the cart before the horse, and regardless of the fact it was in the C I P and things are rolling, if it may be beneficial to pull back a little bit and just see what is most conducive for bicyclists as well as motorists and pedestrians, Star Tran.
I, I appreciate your wisdom, Councilman Camp, and I, I, I do understand the intention of pulling this into the master plan, but we've got two important things happening here. One is that we have a deadline with respect to the grant dollars that this neighborhood would like to leverage, of course. But we also have some safety considerations and waiting for safety improvements, knowing, um, that yet today, there was a, there was a pretty severe crash on Thirteenth Street. We don't want to delay for the sake of delay. Coordination is important, but this project was approved two years ago, and we're really, it's a well-studied project. Traffic engineers have signed off, the neighborhood has signed off, and we don't want to delay these safety improvements any longer.
And I would add to what, uh, Director Esposito just said. Understand that we are coordinating on this. Um, so as we went into the downtown master plan study, uh, there is an expectation that some type of improvement that we've been talking about for Thirteenth Street would either be done or underway by the time we were studying the downtown master plan. So that is kind of as far as we were concerned, because it is an approved project in the C I P, uh, and the concepts within that project are part of the adopted, uh, long-range plan for the, for the city. That, that has been considered as kind of a, an expectation that it's happening. So we are coordinating our concepts for the downtown plan with that project.
Other questions for the Planning Department? Councilman Eskridge?
Well, and, you know, part, yeah, one of, there, there are a lot of ifs of, of what could happen with the downtown master plan, and one of the ifs is, or possibilities was the possibility of a two-way street on Thirteenth Street that would, in my opinion, uh, enhance transportation both to and from downtown.
Correct. I mean, I, I would also add to that point is that, um, the way we've been looking at Thirteenth Street and how our engineers have been looking at it is that the improvements that are proposed for south of downtown at this point, uh, has independent utility, that it could happen and have some, um, some positives to it, if nothing else for the safety factor, uh, that the improvement would bring to it. Um, so it can stand on its own. It does not need that downtown master plan to be adopted to move forward.
Okay.
Other questions?
You know, this reminds me of an engineering picture I saw of two sides of a, a valley, the bridges coming together. Engineers would appreciate this, and they suddenly got together. They were in a hurry to start, and they didn't meet. And I think, I, I don't have a dog in this, uh, act here. I just, I thought it was interesting- act here. I just, I thought it was interesting, though, that the letter came forward and it came as a prize. But I think just the coordination to know what we're doing, so it's for everyone's benefit. And so I think there are an awful lot of things being suggested in the study, and it's just a matter of, just because something's rolling ahead doesn't mean you stop momentarily.
I, I totally agree. I, I agree with the wisdom of coordination, and I assure you, we've coordinated a lot for this project the last two years. The, the second part of that is, we're trying to make this stretch contiguous with what's happening south of, of this stretch. So, if you want a project kind of breakdown from our traffic engineers, we're happy to do that today. But...
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I'm going to withdraw my motion to delay, because I think that actually is counterproductive for what these gentlemen at the strategic plan, the downtown strategic plan would like. I think it, it, it sounds like if we vote to delay, that the project's going ahead anyway. And, and I don't, I don't think that's what they want. And I certainly think that, basically, the way to delay it in order to provide coordination appears to be to vote in favor of the resolution that's in front of us today. So, I'm withdrawing my motion.
From a technical standpoint, this, this body speaks as a whole to delay the project. That's much easier than delaying in order to put it on indefinite pending, from a technical standpoint. So, it's just clearer to our department about what the intention of this body would be if you actually take action on this resolution in front of you.
Okay, so...
From a very technical standpoint, my apologies.
We've had a brief period of discussion on a motion to delay, which was motion by Councilwoman Lamb, second by Councilwoman Camp, and she has withdrawn her motion. So we're back to the original resolution now and the public hearing portion. Is that, so we're all clear?
Correct. She ate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, here we go. Again, five minutes, four-minute timer, it'll beep at the one, there'll be one minute left for the testifier, and then you can, should come forward if you wish to speak. Everyone in support first, and then everyone in opposition. Here we go.
This kind of reminds me of an Abbott and Costello thing. I'm not sure I know who's on first at this point in time. I'm here on behalf of Citizens for Improved Transit, and there's a position that can be taken, which is neither pro nor con. And I'm here to convey to you that Citizens for Improved Transit, its board, asked me to convey to you that we take a neutral position on the whole question. That's CFIT. Now, I wear a lot of hats. So I'm going to put on another hat, and that's me as Richard Schmeling, individual. Richard Schmeling, 4610 Van Dorn Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you.
Personally, I think that the idea to do what's proposed for Thirteenth Street makes a lot of sense. I have looked at the studies from the state of Iowa, where they have done a number of these two-plus-ones. And in all of those instances, they have seen a reduction in accidents on that stretch of street, as much as a twenty-eight percent reduction. They've seen that the traffic flow is not significantly impeded. There seems to be a tip-over point of about fifteen thousand vehicles per day where the two-plus-one doesn't work. So, we're now, as I understand it, in city traffic and engineering, correct me, we're at the ten thousand level on Thirteenth Street. And there hasn't been much growth over the past few years. The thing that recommends it strongly to me is that what we're doing is we're talking about just painting a bunch of lane markers. That's, we're not pouring concrete, we're not, we're not creating medians and, concrete medians and so on. So if we do this, and we suddenly find, for whatever reason, it's not working out, then Mickey has the oil truck come, and we spray a coat of oil, and we erase the markings, and it goes back to four lanes. Now, LIBA has identified a potential problem that I think you need to be aware of, and that is that if we put the bike lanes along the curbs on both sides, which is what's proposed, the buses have to pull to the curb to pick up and discharge passengers. That's going to put the buses into the bike lanes. So we need to deal with that. And I'm not sure that's been sufficiently addressed. I think it can be easily addressed, because at the university, we have the same situation, bike lanes where the buses have to pull across. And what they do is they stripe diagonally the bike lanes in the area where the buses are, are going to operate, which would be a, a sort of alert to the bicyclists that, hey, this isn't an exclusive lane anymore. You may have to share this, and you need to be aware of a movement by a Star Tran bus into the lane. And that, that to me, it seems to me we need to solve that problem. Because we have bike lanes in the middle of Eleventh and Fourteenth Street. They cause fits for the Star Tran drivers. They have resulted in accidents. And that's the one thing we don't want to have. And I've had conversations with Benny Shob, who's a bicycle rider, with Jane Raybold, who isn't here today. Both of you tell me that as bicycle riders, you're more comfortable with having the bike lanes near the curb. So, I think that's a good idea. Now, if we can figure out what to do with the interference with the Star Tran buses.
One minute.
Then, then I think we've got it nailed. So, I guess that's my personal opinion. And I, I certainly understand the neighborhood wanting to calm the traffic. They've got a major street going right through the middle of the neighborhood. And I think that as a city, what we need to do is to calm the traffic. And, and we get into this debate, you know, is it more important to flow the traffic, or is it more important to calm the traffic in the neighborhoods? And I, I certainly think that, that the, the hammer comes down on the side of calming the traffic and creating a good, safe neighborhood for pedestrians, bicyclists, motos, and Star Tran buses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person wishing to testify?
Good evening, Chairman Shob, members of the council. Lonnie Berklin, Assistant Director of Transportation. Just a couple of quick points of clarification maybe on project information, and then a, a question for you. I've also got Mark Lucha Harms, our manager of traffic engineering up here as well.
Thank you.
And we'll be available throughout the evening to, to answer questions or after testimony, if, if there are any. In terms of the South Thirteenth Street Improvement Project, the two goals of the project really are to make the street safer and improve traffic flow. The project includes improving the existing four-lane undivided street section to a three-lane street with a center two-way left-turn lane. And that, that project would extend from South Street to Lincoln Mall. The project includes provisions to basically make better use of the existing street pavement, as, as you heard a little bit of that already. Basically, we're restriping it with new pavement markings. We're adding provisions for pedestrian crosswalk safety at a few locations with active warning devices and, and new marked crosswalks. And then, of course, the provision for bike lanes north-south along the corridor. As the Director Esposito pointed out, it is funded through a Partner for Places grant, which we've been told does expire sometime in December, right at the end of the year. And then I'd finally just say, you know, we, we know that, that the project would improve operations and safety. And to that point, I'd just have Mark point out a couple of those things.
Good evening, council. Again, Mark Lucha Harms, Manager of Traffic Engineering Section within the Department of Transportation Utilities. I'd just like to speak a little bit in greater detail about the, the operational and safety objectives of the project. As I think many of you know, there was a comprehensive traffic study that was conducted for this section of seven, or Thirteenth Street, excuse me. And subsequent to that study, we did a, a more detailed comparison of crashes and operations for this specific section of Thirteenth Street, and compared that to a section, or a street that had similar characteristics to what we're proposing to turn Thirteenth Street into. And we didn't have to look very far. Just south of this specific section of Thirteenth Street, to that section of Thirteenth Street, south of, South Street, we have exactly what we're proposing to do, a, a traditional three-lane, two-plus-one roadway section. And the graphic that hopefully you can see illustrates the operational and safety benefits of what we're proposing to do. That section of Thirteenth Street, south of South Street, carries approximately forty percent more traffic than the section of Thirteenth Street that we're talking about does, and has three times a lower crash rate than the section of Thirteenth Street. So, in this case, this three-lane section of street of Thirteenth Street, south of South Street that we're talking about, carries more traffic and is safer than what we're talking about. So we think that speaks greatly to this cross-section or this type of street that we would like to convert the north segment of Thirteenth Street into. And as Mickey suggested or indicated, we had an unfortunate incident occur on that northern segment today at the intersection of Thirteenth and E, where we had a left-turning vehicle trying to turn off of Thirteenth Street, and a vehicle trying to cross Thirteenth Street on E collide with one another. And very typical and representative of the type of crashes that we're seeing throughout Thirteenth Street.
Just maybe one last point of clarification, maybe for Chairman Shob. We have received a couple of notes, just to maybe you might clarify for those in attendance tonight, of support of the resolution is support of keeping the street as is, and opposition to the resolution is to move forward with the project. So I just, I've received a few notes about that. And just, if you could double-check or clarify for the people that are here tonight to talk, and then we can provide more data as needed.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. You mentioned the study that you did south of South Street on Thirteenth. Can you tell me, how far was that distance? Was it from South Street to Highway Two, from South Street to Arapahoe? What were the parameters?
Absolutely. The, the limits, if you will, of, of that segment, south of South Street, was from Saratoga Street to Arapahoe Street. Once, once, the, the short segment between south and Saratoga is not, it's actually a four-lane divided street, so it's neither of the two configurations that we're speaking to this evening. And then the same thing for south of Arapahoe Street. It, it turns into a roadway section that's, that's different from either of the two segments we're talking about. So Saratoga to Arapahoe is the limits of that south section.
Okay. Can you tell me how many driveways there are in that segment?
I do not have that number of, of access points or driveways on that segment.
Okay. Because I think, I think that you guys said there were a hundred between Centennial Mall and South Street on, on nor, the northern part of Thirteenth Street.
Yeah. We did observe, or we did count over a hundred. I would suggest that the segment, that southern segment is similar. There's alleys, there's public streets, there's driveways that access Thirteenth Street. So, fairly, fairly similar in character.
But, but isn't it true that the more access points there are, the more chances of conflict and the more chance of crashes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Before I recognize Councilwoman Camp, I want to go back to Mr. Berklin's statement. We have a resolution before us to not enhance the safety on Thirteenth Street. So a person testifying in support would be testifying to leave Thirteenth Street the way it is now. A person testifying in opposition to the resolution would say, would be a person testifying to proceed with the, with the Public Works Plan. Does everybody say clear as mud or highway paint? Thank you. Councilwoman Camp, please.
I'm curious from Public Works or Transportation now, I, and I, I do support the, the single turn lane with either one lane on the other, each side, or even double lanes, but with a single one there. Does that lead to down the road, you would be more willing not to have medians in the middle, and instead, like on Pioneer and some streets, to have lanes with a center turn lane?
I, I can address that. I think if, if you're discussing more of a, a four-lane arterial, our typical design application that we've been doing now with access management and access control, really what we see with those types of facilities, a, a higher functional class. We would maintain the median design, something similar to, you're probably familiar with the newer stretches down on Yankee Hill Road, where we've got quarter-mile access points. Whether that's a standard intersection or a roundabout intersection, we would maintain the, the median, most likely, along those four-lane.
I'd like to open that discussion beyond all of this, because I think there's a lot of benefit to having that center turn lane, maintenance-wise, construction-wise. And you're proving the point here with Thirteenth Street.
Yeah. We definitely see in this three-lane application, at this type of traffic volume and for this type of street character, that the, the open median, that center two-way turn lane is, is a big advantage for, for this project.
Works with five lanes, too. Okay. Thank you.
So we'll put a pin in the city turn lane for multiple lanes, and come back to that later.
Get rid of medians and have center turn lanes, so we don't have to maintain them crumbling.
Councilwoman Gaylord Baird?
Could you address the question about how the bike lane and buses may interact and safety planning that you have taken into consideration as you've worked on this project?
Yeah, I can make maybe a couple of brief comments, and Mark, feel free to jump in. You know, there's some other case studies, like many of the comparisons with the three-lane and four-lane that we've been talking about. And also with the three-lane sections with bike lanes. We don't see that there's a huge exposure and, and a conflict between the bikes and the buses. We will mark those appropriately with the dashed markings at those locations where there are bus stops. Really, on the south end of this project, there's ample room for the buses to get out of the way of the through traffic with, with the bike lane buffer and the width that's there. Up on the north end, as I, I think you heard Mr. Schmeling state, there are some opportunities that we're looking at to do bus turnouts. And that's in the segment that's a little narrower, where it would be the, the three-through lanes with the, the tighter-spaced bike lanes with, with less of a buffer. And so in those cases, we can do a, we can do a turnout there.
Yeah. And I guess I would just add to that. As you may recall, about a year ago, we converted Vine Street and Sixteenth Street through, through campus to incorporate bike lanes. And in that twelve or thirteen months since, we have had no reported collisions between buses or bicyclists. So, all indications show that that is working in a safe fashion.
Councilwoman Lamb has some additional questions?
Yeah, I just, because of the bus turnouts, can you give me an estimate cost to the city of what it would cost for a bus, to develop a bus turnout?
We're still finalizing those plans. And of course, we won't, we won't have all of that until we take bids on the project. We anticipate that those costs could, you know, go north of where the, the grant covers the basic costs of the markings and some of that work. But we'll know more as we finalize the, the plans in the next few weeks, to get a bid package put together. Typical bus turnouts of, of that nature, you know, with the, with the smaller taper lengths, with this type of speed limit, would be more in the, the ten to fifteen K range.
Other questions for these testifiers? Thank you. So, we're still in the, back to the nice statement I read earlier on, people in support of the resolution. Are there others that wish to testify in support of the resolution, leaving the current configuration? I see no one moving. So, here we go. Those in opposition to the resolution, please come forward and testify.
Hello. My name is Amy Hochstetler. That's A-M-Y-H-O-C-H-S-T-E-L-E-R. I'm at 1316 South 24th Street. And I am on the Executive Board of the Near South Neighborhood Association. I live in the Near South, so directly impacted by this. I'm appearing before you, representing the board and myself. And we want to convey our strong support for the safety improvements to Thirteenth Street between Lincoln Mall and South Street. The project will convert Thirteenth Street from a four-lane undivided street to a three-lane street with a center turn lane to improve safety and traffic flow. The project has been planned and looked at for over two years. We are trying to improve safety. According to the city website, there have been a hundred and sixty-seven reported traffic crashes. Lincoln Fire and Rescue data shows that seventy of those crashes were injury crashes. It's a dangerous street. Seventy crashes in five years, that's more than one a month. What, one every five, four or five weeks? The city traffic engineering study also examined the type and causes of the crash. What did they find? Out of those a hundred and sixty-seven crashes, converting the street to three lanes with a center turn lane could have prevented fifty-four of those crashes with no less, no loss to traffic flow. Fifty-four preventable crashes with no loss of traffic flow. So the expert engineering study shows we can make Thirteenth Street dramatically safer with this change. And the study also proves that three-lane conversion helps traffic flow. It's actually pretty easy to understand why this works. Nobody's worried about getting T-boned while they're trying to make a left turn going home. We actually have a great real-world example of how this works. Thirteenth Street between South and Van Dorn, or Saratoga and Arapahoe, just a few blocks away on the same street, it's already a three-lane street. It's already doing good things. It handles more traffic than the current segment under consideration, and there's fewer crash rates, as was previously pointed. and there's fewer crash rates, as was previously pointed out. I'm not sure why there's a city council resolution to stop an important safety project. It's really frustrating. I regularly drive Thirteenth Street, Sixteenth Street, and Seventeenth Street. Anything that we can do to make things safer for buses, pedestrians, kids trying to walk to school, or people driving would be a great thing. We know that fifty-four crashes could have been prevented over the last five years with this design change. What do we say to those families? That's fifty-four families whose cars have been crashed, they've been damaged. What do we say to those families that are putting themselves at risk just driving on the street? We had a crash today. When's our next one? Is it in a few weeks? When we meet again? You can't say that this resolution is necessary to keep traffic moving. The science and the engineering data prove otherwise. You can't say that improvements might not work. We have real-world examples, and we have a study that shows that this will make it safer. We live here, and we care about our safety. As citizens, we count on the city council leadership to help us stay safe, and we trust you to do the right thing. The proposed city council resolution has no basis in fact, does not help traffic flow. All it does is keep Thirteenth Street dangerous. The Near South Neighborhood Association and I urge you to vote against this resolution and let the safety improvements continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Next testifier, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Chauvin and members of the council. I'm not sure I want to follow that. Amy did a good job. My name is Tonya, T-O-N-Y-A, last name is Notel, N-G-O-T-E-L. I also live in the Near South neighborhood, and the address is one nine two nine Washington. I'm here as a resident within the Near South and also a board member in support of Amy's comments, but also in the support of our neighbors in the Everett neighborhood, who you'll hear from in a minute. I'm going to be brief in my comments, and mine are really to add on to the safety that Amy has mentioned, to the engineers that have mentioned, and to the director of Public Works. But it's also, I want to speak against what's happening in city politics. I think this resolution is maybe politics at play. That's really unfortunate, and it shouldn't come to that. It really is a safety issue. The reality of the situation is that the plan that's in place is good, and the resolution is not geared towards safety. So, I think everyone along Thirteenth Street will attest to that. You're going to hear stories of walkers, bikers, elderly people crossing traffic, so please be cognizant of that. I also want to say, it's my opinion that the resolution and the outlying issues are, it's really created a lot of issues within our city, between the bikers, between the transit people that go in and out of downtown, and specifically within the neighbors that live in the Near South and the Everett neighborhood. So, I implore you to listen to the voice of the people that you hear next. Consider that we deserve to have a safe and convenient streets, and I urge you to vote against this resolution.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much for coming forward. Next testifier, please.
Hello. Pat Anderson, C. Fuentes, fifteen hundred South Eleventh Street. So, I'm wearing my Everett resident hat today. You've already, I know we've already submitted a letter as Everett-Neverton Association. I can't get that down any lower. So, whether or not anybody can stack the studies, whatever direction they want, I believe our Public Works has done due diligence on this project, and I fully support the changes to three-lane. But I want you to, it bothers me that, I know the public has come forward, and you've heard from a lot of people, that because this is maybe a high-rental neighborhood, that people aren't being listened to. And I want you to think back. I have gray hair for a reason. It's all earned. But many years ago, my memory doesn't always serve me exactly correctly. There was a huge push to widen a lot of streets, and I'm talking Thirteenth, Fortieth, Twentieth, South Twenty-seventh, but they did use Twenty-Seventh, South of O. That was way back when. So, yeah, I think it was in nineteen ninety, so there were, it might have been like a dozen, six to twelve streets, that they were wanting to widen from two-lane to four-lane. And residents were up in arms, and the Public Works and the city residents came to a conclusion that we could accomplish, we didn't have to take up more green space, redo the curbing, and widen streets to four-lane, that we could get by with that middle-turn lane. And that has worked well. I mean, if you can think of all the streets where there's a middle-turn lane, that has served us well for many decades. And we saved a lot of money by not widening those streets. And we saved a lot of neighborhoods by not turning a residential street into a four-lane traffic, traffic street. So, I would urge you to support going forward with the three lanes. And another thing I want you to think about is, I guess I'm here more for pedestrians and bikers, because that's why we, over and over again, whenever you do surveys in this area, that's why we live there, because it's so, you don't have to depend on your car. But it would, we don't have a lot of green space in that area either, so it's important to walk and bike. We don't have great health outcomes, because there's, we lack green space, and maybe a few other things. But, so I would urge you to make this area as safe as you can, and this project, I think, does that. When I walk in the morning, I have to head south, because my walking path needs to go north and south. I have to deal with A Street or South Street, and then I can, and then I'm a little bit freer to go on my speed walk. But if I want to go east and west, I've got Ninth, Tenth, Thirteenth, Sixteenth, Seventeenth, all those streets to contend with. We, it was poor planning, I believe, that made those arterials so close together. And I think if we can make Thirteenth Street calm that traffic, so that it's a little more livable and works better for everyone in that area than, and through the city, then I think that's a win-win. So, do you have any questions? I don't want to reiterate what other people have said, so.
Anyone in the council have questions for this testifier?
One other thing, too. I think you also keep in mind that, I heard it, that they, that we should look at this street with the, how it's used ninety-nine percent of the time, not one percent of the time when there's heavy traffic after a game or after events. So, I guess I would urge you to also consider that in your vote.
Thank you. Again, no one questions? Next testifier. Ms.?
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I favor reducing a stretch of Thirteenth Street from four lanes to three. I am eighty-five years old. I have no car. If I had a car, I'm too old to drive it, so I walk. Well, that's not bad. Remember, we're in Lincoln. A beautiful city, tree-lined streets, well-kept up homes and commercial enterprises. If most of the people in this room set out to cross Thirteenth Street, they get there first. But luckily, again, we are in Lincoln, a city that cares for its old folks. Lincoln cares. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you yield for a question, Councilman?
Yes, you didn't introduce yourself. Could you tell?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Janet Krendle. I live at thirteen oh one Lincoln Mall.
Thank you.
Good catch, Councilman. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person testifying in opposition.
Hi. My name is Isabel Salas. I-S-A-B-E-L-S-A-L-A-S. I live at six six five Sumner Street, and I'm here today to represent the South of Downtown Community Development Organization, which is a partner in this grant that we have to do the Thirteenth Street project, among other things. Basically, my job is to talk to people, find out what's going on and how we can work together. And I can confidently say this, that the neighborhood wants Thirteenth Street to be safer for everyone, and that includes everyone. I'm incredibly appalled at the opposition's insistence that their cars' importance and misconceptions about traffic capacity are being validated by the mere introduction of this resolution. Instead of spending our time finding real solutions to actual problems, such as affordable housing or the healthcare access in our neighborhood, we've had to spend time up against political groups who just want to push this neighborhood around for their own political gain, who don't even bother to get to know the neighborhood and the people who live in it. This is a grant-funded project, and the studies and the facts put together by the city and numerous other sources show that there's huge benefits to be gained by making Thirteenth Street safer. I want to bring up another point of opposition. Some have tried to frame this, their opposition to the Thirteenth Street project, as being fearful of unintentionally gentrifying the neighborhood by making it more attractive to people. And to that, I'd like to extend that invitation to work with us to preserve, create, and maintain quality, affordable rental housing citywide, because your affordable housing plan should not be to simply keep neglecting the safety and infrastructure of the neighborhood. My job is to talk to people and learn what they like and what they want to improve in the neighborhood. And going door-to-door, I've encountered so many people who live here who don't have cars, whose decision to ride a bike or walk or take a bus isn't really a choice, it's a necessity. Knowing that, I'm confused as to why we would choose to keep this street unsafe for those people who are obligated to cross it every day, just to get to work, to walk their children to school, to get groceries, or to connect with neighbors. Modern city planning doesn't include roads laid out like Thirteenth Street in the middle of neighborhoods, because the two-plus-one alternative is so much safer, and this neighborhood does not have the benefit of that modern city planning, because it is so historic. So, I'll keep it short, and I'll wrap up now, because I want you all to hear from the neighbors and the community partners that we've gathered here today. And I want you to recognize and validate their voices and their concerns for their neighborhood. And so, in closing, I'd like to urge you to vote against the resolution and let the Thirteenth Street project unfold as planned.
Thank you. Someone on the council have questions for this testifier? Thank you very much for coming forward. Next testifier, please.
Hello, council. My name is Grant Daly. I work in community building at Neighborhoods Lincoln. I live at fourteen thirty South Knight Street, and I also happen to be the president of the South Salt Creek Community Organization, which is about five blocks away from this proposed project. With this project, I think it's important we remember the context of place and the nodes of activity along Thirteenth Street. Thirteenth Street isn't just or chiefly a commuter road. It's home to a community hub, a place where people come together to interact. So, a great example of this is the intersection between Thirteenth and F Street, where neighbors walk and bike to local Mexican restaurant El Chaparro and the La Lucion Market. And just north of these businesses, bordering Thirteenth Street, is the F Street Neighborhood Church. This church does a lot of outreach to the community, holds youth activities, helps stop food waste, and provides food for those in need through Food Net and the F Street Farmers Market. Everett Elementary is one block away from Thirteenth Street, and the F Street Recreation Center is located directly on the west side of Thirteenth Street. So, we're talking about a place where children walk to and from these locations throughout the week. And I really feel bad for any that have to cross Thirteenth Street in its current state. The double lanes are not inviting to any bike rider or pedestrian crossing between these destinations. And I feel strongly that the change from what it is now to a two-plus-one with bike lanes moves to a system that maintains current traffic capacity and supports the safe use of this community hub. The pedestrian beacon that's been discussed, I believe, would also help to improve safety for these, those crossing Thirteenth Street. This area has critical neighborhood assets that are currently separated by a road type that does not reflect the character and the best use of the location. And in making your decision today, I ask that you consider how this improvement project could benefit the people, businesses, and community centers of the surrounding neighborhood. So, I ask you to vote against the resolution before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hi. My name is Catherine Wiese. That's K-A-T-H-A-R-E-N-Wiese. That's W-I-E-S-E. I live at ten thirty-seven South Thirteenth Street. The crash that happened today happened a hundred feet in front of my house. I've lived in this apartment for maybe, I don't know, a few months, and like three, four months, I just got married. And I'm shocked at how unsafe it is. I'm shocked at the lack of crosswalks and how long it's been that way. Jeff Hirsping, who is the pastor at F Street Community Church, is my neighbor. I also rent from him. He's my landlord. And we were talking about the renovations, and he said, "I moved in here three years ago, and the city promised to put in crosswalks at D Street and F Street years ago, and this still hasn't happened." And he's tired. He has three children. I'm tired. I teach Sunday School. I see my kids crossing that street, and I think, wow, that's really unsafe. It's really unsafe that we leave it that way. So, I'm also a community builder at South of Downtown Community Development Organization. I'm an employee at Gomez Art Supply, a graduating senior at UNL, and most resonantly, most relevantly, a resident living and working in the area. So, I bike to work, and I walk to campus, and I do a lot of biking and walking. It's, I love being active. It's part of, just one of my passions. And I know that there are people that bike on Thirteenth Street. I've done it a couple of times. I don't like prefer to do it, but it's like significantly, the pavement is much smoother than on Eleventh, where there already are bike lanes, as some of you maybe know. So, I think having bike lanes there, I'm fully in support of it. I'm excited about it. I can just jump on my bike and go right to Gomez, so I would love to have bike lanes there. In addition to being a cyclist and being a commuter on foot right now the past few months, I also lived on, like, very far out, so I'd take Fifty-Sixth Street to the highway and take Thirteenth Street to campus. And so, I know what it's like to commute from far out and come into the city, and I'd always take Thirteenth Street, because it's not as hectic as Ninth or Tenth Street. So, I think even living the lanes, I think will still have really good traffic flow in my, like, personal experience and opinion. More importantly than bike lanes is crosswalks. As I said earlier, I attended the church, or I still attend the church. I've been going there for five years. But of course, we have F Street Rec, and we have Center Point, and then all the activities that happen at the church. And so, it's like, there's so much foot traffic, more than car traffic. We need to be thinking about the people that live in the area and the needs of the children in the area. This morning, I also witnessed a blind man trying to cross the street. I don't know if you guys have seen a blind man trying to cross the street where there is no crosswalk. It's ridiculous. It's really troublesome. It's really hard to do that when there's not that, like, beeping signal. And I'm like driving my car, hoping this person is feeling safe. And I want us to make sure we're doing everything we can to hear out the people, myself and everybody that cares so much about this project, because it affects people. It affects people every day. It affects all of us. So, if you can take that seriously, I'd appreciate it, and thank you so much for your time so far.
Thank you. Questions for testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hello. My name is Giselle Navarez. G-I-S-E-L-L-E, last name N-E-V, as in Victor-A-R-E-Z, and I live nine two six South Eleventh Street. So, I've been living there at that residence for about, this will be my third year now. And I came from Omaha, a very car-heavy city. There's a bike lane in front of my house, which is so convenient. I drove a car for many, many years, and recently I gave up my car. So, I had to change my lifestyle, had to change the way I got to work, how I get my groceries, how I just get around the city of Lincoln. And another great opportunity that I've had, as well as, I've been volunteering with the South of Downtown Community Organization, and I've been getting to know my neighbors and talking to them about their concerns and seeing how they live their lives and how they access the same resources that I have to access. Putting myself in those perspectives, I realized that we don't all have cars. We all have to cross the same streets. We all still need to get food. We all have to go to work. These are all problems that we have to strategize and figure out on our own. I think the city does an amazing job of hearing us out, so I'm thankful for the opportunity today. I oppose this resolution. I found out about this resolution through the website, Save Lincoln Streets. I'd like to address the clarity of that website. I feel like it's very confusing. A lot of the facts are based off of misprints. It's also based off of pseudoscience, beliefs that we don't really feel are supported by research at all. I know that there was one reference cited by the website from Michigan State, just from Michigan State, sorry. I don't actually have the title. from Michigan State, sorry, I don't actually have the title. It's a detailed operational analysis, and that study recommends local considerations, which I think is something that we can fulfill people from the community. So, sorry, I would like to just clarify that, you know, drivers who use that Thirteenth Street tend to have, they have to, when they turn left, they have to stop, and that increases the risk of being either rear-ended or being blindsided and hit by oncoming traffic. As a pedestrian, you have to stop on either side and wait for the traffic to slow down, which Thirteenth Street is extremely busy, and it's hard to do that. And then as a cyclist, it's easier, if we had bike lanes, we'd be able to connect the neighborhoods, which I feel like, talking about all those forms of transportation, increasing the mobility, is something that we should strive for as a community, in addition to making it safer, even if you're living here or if you're just passing by. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much for coming forward and speaking. Next testifier, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Lisa Jansen, J-A-N-S-S-E-N. I am here as a representative, I'm with Community Action. I work at The Gathering Place, which is in the neighborhood that we're discussing today. So I'm here just to offer some education from what I'm hearing, from the folks that I work with and I serve. So I apologize, I'm a sweaty mess. We served a hundred and fifty-two meals tonight. That is a lot of people coming in the door for Fifteenth and E Street. So I see a wide sample of our population in that neighborhood. A lot of them are coming on bicycle, a lot of them on foot, and we're there to serve all of them. So, the other night, the guests just started talking to me. I didn't even ask, and this was on their mind. And so I'm going to give you just a sample of what they said. One person said, "It's so bad, we need an overpass." That's pretty dramatic, but that was their statement. One person said, "We just need more crosswalks that actually go when you push them." One person said, "We need more lights." One person said, "More, no bike lanes." The other said, "No, increase the bike lanes." So you've got opinions on both ends of the bike lanes. The one that was most meaningful to me, though, was a family that I was working with, and they said, "They don't let their children go to F Street Neighborhood Rec Center. They make them stay home and not engage in the activities over there, because they don't want them crossing the street. They're at that age where it's just vulnerable enough, and they're not trusting enough, because there aren't good crosswalks and lights for them." So, my takeaway from that was, the community is missing out on the benefits of that community, and they're staying home. I think that's all I have to add, and I don't speak for all of our guests, I'm just giving you a little bit of what I hear, because I think that's helpful.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Again, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you for your time.
Next testifier, please.
My name is Dr. Karina McCormick, C-A-R-I-N-A-M-C-C-O-R-M-I-C-K. I live at fifteen oh-two E Street, which, coincidentally, I didn't plan it, is next to The Gathering Place, which she was just describing, and is also, not coincidentally, just two blocks away from Thirteenth Street, which we're talking about. As a longtime neighborhood resident, I think it's safe to say I've spent more time crossing Thirteenth Street on foot than a lot of the people making this decision, so I want to share some of my experiences. On one day in particular, I solidified my commitment to improving safety on Thirteenth Street, and I remember it really well, because I was trying to cross the street, but it was taking a long time for there to be a long enough break in the cars that me, adult with fairly long legs, could cross it. But there were two young boys, they had their backpacks on, I think maybe they were coming home from school, they were about nine or ten, and they were waiting to cross too, and there weren't any brakes in the cars, so they decided they were going to go for it. And they ran across the street as long, as fast as those little nine-year-old legs could take them, and they were terrified. And they got to the end of the street, and I could see how scared they had been, and I thought to myself, "Why do we make them do that? I don't want them to have to do that anymore." And I've been really involved in the We Are Vital Neighborhood Organization, and just last month, I got appointed to the South of Downtown Community Development Organization, because I really want to see improvements like this made in the neighborhood. And that's just one of countless stories that I've seen, that because four lanes of traffic is too many lanes to make neighborhood residents cross in order to simply go about their lives. And, you know, some of these things here, we're talking about going to the F Street Center, things like that, like, we need to justify why we should get to cross the road safely, like, it's a riddle, "Why did my neighbors cross the road?" The answer is just so we can get to the other side of that four-lane chasm that's stuck in the middle of our neighborhood. So why did my neighbors cross the road? Because they live here, and it's the responsibility of City Council to make sure it's safe for them to do so. You probably recall that the consultant from H3 was contracted to develop a revitalization plan for the neighborhood, and one of the first things they did is they said, "You can't have a street like that in the middle of the neighborhood if you want to revitalize it." They actually wanted to close it, which we knew wouldn't work, but we did agree that something needed to happen in order to create more connectivity and a better sense of community. A lot of people talk about our neighborhood like it's not safe. Maybe I also think our neighborhood isn't safe, but for very different reasons, they're talking about crime. I'm talking about just walking around, speeding cars, lack of these crosswalks, insufficient street lighting, and also, you know, those ramps going to Thirteenth Street, they're not good enough, they don't meet ADA standards. And so many of the comments that have been gathered from residents, as you're hearing again today, support these prioritizations. Residents wanted this, residents support it. Contrary to what the resolution claims, the project won't slow down the flow of traffic. However, even if it did, wouldn't it still be worth it to protect the families that live in this neighborhood? Shouldn't the needs of the residents be the main consideration? But luckily, we don't have to decide between the needs of residents and the needs of those just driving through, since the project will also improve safety for drivers. Now, a lot of the people that are in here know that I'm a serious bike commuter. One thing I don't do on my bike, almost ever, is ride on Thirteenth Street, because it's terrifying and offensive, how much I get honked at, passed, and yelled at. So even though, so this would be great, I would use the bike lanes if they were there, but that's not why I would support the project. I would still support the project if the bike lanes got scrapped, for the reasons I talked about. Funny thing, though, today, I decided to ride my bike home on Thirteenth Street for lunch, just to get a reminder of what it was like, and as if the universe conspired to help me prove my point, that this street is dangerous, I saw that accident. There was that picture, I don't know if you guys saw how many broken car parts and toxic liquids were all over the sidewalk in my neighborhood on my actual street. And since the current design leads to higher-than-expected number of accidents, given that volume, I wasn't so surprised to learn that the accident that happened today is the type that could be prevented. So people are getting hurt, people are afraid, just in their own neighborhood, and there's an easy way to stop it, and that's why I hope you vote against this resolution.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Um, hi.
You want to pull that, just pull the microphone toward the, yes.
Um, my name is Marin, M-A-R-E-N-S-T-E-I-N-K-E. I'm opposing this resolution that this council has made, because I walk to school every day, and I walk on Twenty-seventh Street, and it's still really scary, even though it's a two-plus-one, and I cross it, and it has stoplights, it has really good crosswalks, and I think that having a two-plus-one and bike lanes on Thirteenth Street would really improve the neighborhood around me and others. And studies have shown that bikes and physical activity outside can actually, like, lower, like, stress or anger in someone, so having these bike lanes could also reduce crime or violence in Lincoln. And I just think that this is a good idea, that we would have this two-plus-one with the bike lanes, because we can solve the problems of the buses and any other problems that come up if we join together as a community of Lincoln and work hard.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lamb, would like to ask you a question.
Hello, Marin, is it?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming today, I appreciate it. I just needed to clarify, because I didn't quite hear, which street, you said something about a two-plus-one, which one do you walk on to go to school?
I walk on Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-third?
South Twenty-seventh.
Okay, and it's a two-plus-one, and then which one do you cross?
I cross Twenty-seventh and Van Dorn.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Marin? She's kind of with the building, but. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Harrison, it's J-E-N-N-I-F-E-R, and then H-A-R-A-Z-I-N. I live at nine-two-six South Eleventh Street. You heard my roommate earlier. We both ride our bikes. I split pretty evenly between driving and riding my bike, and walking when I need to. But as a driver, as a car on Thirteenth Street, not only is it stressful, because I see all of these pedestrians running across, but also, without that dedicated turn lane, a lot of people will stop abruptly to turn left, and not always use their signals, so I'm always kind of really alert, trying to make sure that I don't hit someone, and I would never, ever want to hit a pedestrian, and people do run across, because they think that they see an opportunity, because it's so hard to get past that street. And as a driver and as a cyclist, it's terrible to cross Thirteenth Street, because the four lanes, it's not that there's a lot of traffic, but it's just consistent all of the time. There's always one or two cars there, and so it's always difficult to judge, like, there's one car in the far-left lane, and there's one car over here, can I make it? I hate trying to make that decision, and I don't think any pedestrian cyclist driver should have to deal with that in the middle of their neighborhood. It also makes it really difficult, as a cyclist especially, to get where I need to, because I do live on that Eleventh Street bike lane, but it doesn't continue south far enough, and it doesn't continue north far enough, and the Fourteenth Street one really doesn't help me at all unless I'm actually downtown. So getting to that Fourteenth one, I would have to cross Thirteenth Street, so it doesn't really help me in any way. And there's just, it's so much division in our neighborhood, it's really frustrating. I hate to see people nearly getting hit. The data collected doesn't say that it's going to, it says it's not going to slow down traffic at all, so as a driver, I'm not concerned about that in the slightest, and if I really needed a road with heavier traffic flow, I'd go to Ninth or Tenth, where they have four lanes. I, I just, yeah, I think that's all I need to say, but as someone who lives in the neighborhood, rides my bike and drives my car, I think that this resolution is going, I don't agree with it at all, and I really want to see these safety measures put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the testifier? Thank you very much, Jennifer. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Delan, D-E-L-A-N, Lonowski, L-O-N-O-W-S-K-I. And I'm a renter at eleven twenty-two South Sixteenth Street. I just wanted to briefly voice my opposition to the resolution, just basically on the safety grounds of it. I'm an avid bicyclist, but I don't really care as much about the bike lanes as I do about reducing the distance that people have to travel to cross that on foot or on bike on Thirteenth Street. And, you know, as many other people have pointed out, I'm particularly concerned about that Thirteenth and F intersection, Thirteenth and E, because there are so many kids that use that area, and it's just, it's just, traffic's moving so fast. The other point I wanted to, or dream I wanted to put out there is just, even reducing the speed limit on Thirteenth, Sixteenth, Seventeenth Street, to like, you know, like at least like a thirty mile per hour, or something like that, just to give people a little more chance on foot. I think that's about it, but I just ask you to deny the resolution.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Malone. My address, M-A-L-O-N-E. My address is ninety-nine oh-nine West Stagecoach Road in Lancaster County. I'm here really just as an uninvolved traffic engineer to share some observations and experience relative to this project. I'm a registered professional engineer. I've practiced in about fifteen or twenty states. I've lived and worked in about six states. I'm also a registered professional traffic operations engineer. Have many years of experience, about thirty years of experience, working on projects like this. So I've had interest, as I've watched this project sort of unfold in the newspaper and in the media, and I just wanted to share some observations, and the first is that four-lane undivided roads are statistically the least safe roadway section out there today. They just have poor operational and poor safety characteristics. Most agencies do not build four-lane undivided roads anymore. If they do, they're for a very unique circumstance, where there's no access, or they're a bridge or a viaduct or something like that. They don't typically achieve their theoretical capacity, and that's basically because the inside, you know, there's four lanes, but the inside lane becomes a left-turn lane. It becomes a de facto left-turn lane, where vehicles have to sideswipe and jump in and out of lanes to avoid vehicles that are stopped to make a turn, where there is no turn lane. So there's rear-end accidents, there's left-turn accidents, there's sideswipe accidents, it's a very predictable accident pattern, and it happens on virtually every four-lane undivided road that exists in the country, which is why they're being taken away, they're being taken out of service. On the other hand, three-lane roads work very well. They have superior operational and safety characteristics. You've heard about the research and the case studies, and they're very compelling, and they're very true, and I've worked on projects just like that. I've worked on a number of projects where three lanes versus four-lane undivided have been contemplated, and without question, the three-lane is always the roadway section that gets built, or the three-lane is the roadway section that we retrofit, a four-lane undivided roadway section too, simply because they work better, they're safer, and they're better for the community. The segment that's being considered is really in the sweet spot, so to speak, for this kind of a conversion. You've heard people talk about eight to ten to twelve thousand cars a day, that's the perfect range for a three-lane section with a two-way left-turn lane to operate. I have no doubt in my mind that it'll work exceptionally well. It has done that over and over again throughout the country. The, you've heard also, or I've seen articles in the paper that have kind of hinted that maybe there's some bad examples. I'm sure there are some bad examples throughout the country, but what I would urge you to make sure is that you're actually comparing apples to apples. There's a lot of stuff that's out there that maybe the number of initial lanes wasn't accurate, maybe the retrofit was done, and there wasn't a turn lane afterwards. It might have been a conversion from six-lane to four-lanes. It just probably wasn't a comparable situation, and I would guarantee that, by and large, if you looked at similar situations where a four-lane undivided was converted to a three-lane like this, they almost always will outperform and perform really, really well. There's also been some comments made in the paper that maybe an independent study needs to be made, and I would say that's hogwash. You've got good traffic engineers, you've got good people that are credible, they're professional traffic operations engineers, they've got dozens of years of experience. Lincoln is extremely lucky to have folks like this, so I would urge you all to not pass this resolution and to pass the original project as intended, and I think the citizens of Lincoln will really benefit from it. Thank you.
Councilman Askridge has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Malone, for being here. On this road, the lanes are narrow, I think maybe ten feet, and what I notice when I'm driving down is you seldom see two cars going the same direction in the lanes right next to each other. They're kind of staggered, because, and I'm guessing it's because the lanes are so narrow, that you aren't comfortable being that close to somebody. Any experience with that in terms of capacity of the four-lane?
Well, that certainly is possible. I don't actually know the lane width myself, but I mean, a standard lane width, as you may know, is twelve feet. The Highway Capacity Manual suggests twelve feet. There are certainly many exceptions to that, down as narrow as nine. I've actually seen eight-feet lanes when I lived in California now. I certainly wouldn't recommend that, but, so yeah, I'm sure that cars do shy away, the more friction there is between the lanes or on the adjacent sides of the road, you know, the less comfortable drivers are going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for this testifier? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next testifier, please.
Hello. My name is Gavin Geis, G-A-V-I-N-G-E-I-S, and I'm at fifteen oh-one Washington Street, six-eight-five-zero-two. And a lot of testifiers tonight have talked about multi-modal transport, driving, walking, biking, and I'm just going to speak a little bit about my experience as a disabled individual in the neighborhood. I can't see, I have low vision, I'm not completely blind, but only have half my vision, so I cannot drive. So I cannot drive. But I'm still professional, I still work full-time, but I have to get around other ways, which means I use the bus. I am able to bike. I'm lucky in that way that I can bike some, but I have to be very careful in how I do it. I walk quite a bit, try to bike as much as I can, but like I said, have to be very careful in how I go about that. And so I'm very experienced with bike lanes not being on streets where there's a lot of traffic using side streets. But I'm very experienced with the seasons being out on big streets like Thirteenth. I work in my home, but out at the Capitol. My work takes me to the Capitol, takes me downtown, takes me to Thirteenth Street, takes me down in Tenth and Eleventh, just the downtown areas. And I have to do that, like I said, using public transportation, but also on my feet, on a bike when I can be, in the safe areas. And so this is an area of town that I'm very familiar with and very experienced with as a disabled individual. And I know I'm not the only person in the neighborhood that's experienced, that's experiencing this way of living and not through choice. Right, I respect the people in my neighborhood that are doing this through choice, right? That are biking because it's the thing they want to do. That's awesome. But I would love to drive. Frankly, it'd be a lot easier sometimes. But I'm speaking to you as someone who has darted across Thirteenth Street, who remembers the first time they were almost hit by a car very vividly after losing vision, who remembers those experiences very vividly? Who knows what a safe street is on a bike and knows what it feels like to be scared? Who knows what it's like to be able to trust traffic and trust their own two feet and themselves? So this, this is why I'm in clear opposition to this resolution because these changes would be, would be huge for someone like me. It would allow not only the possibility of me being able to possibly, depending upon, I don't know what it'll look like to bike in these bike lanes. Maybe they won't feel safe. Eleventh Street does feel safe for me. It's not the smoothest street, but it is safe. Lincoln drivers are getting used to bikes being next to them. They're learning what that feels like, even if apparently bus drivers don't always know what that feels like. Lincoln drivers are getting used to it. And so that's been a fantastic change and awesome. So I trust drivers next to me. That's awesome. And, but the crosswalk changes, the clear signals, being able to push a button and know I'll be able to cross the street without darting, without running, without fear of looking one way and being utterly scared that when I look back, I don't know how many cars are turning, are, are there when I look back. I can't trust my vision. And I know there are many other people in my neighborhood that are going through these same things. So I would, like I said, I really hope that you think of not just those who are choosing to bike and walk, but those who don't have that choice and who are walking this road because they have to. Because it's the only choice they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hi there. My name's Bill Davenport, B I L L, D A V E N P O R T. I live at nine thirty South Fourteenth Street. So I'm a block from Thirteenth. We've lived a block from South Thirteenth Street for almost thirty-nine years. And we've seen the traffic increase over the years. It's gotten worse and worse. There are no crosswalks. There used to be a crosswalk and a stoplight at Thirteenth and D. Several years ago, one of the stoplights was damaged in a windstorm and the city chose to remove it. They didn't replace it with a good crosswalk with a push button so pedestrians could easily cross Thirteenth. You take your life into your hands crossing Thirteenth Street. So I'm just speaking in opposition to the resolution to maintain the four lanes on Thirteenth and speaking in full support of a two-plus-one system. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Davenport? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Lotman. I'm at twelve twenty-five C Street. You've heard me speak before, a few meetings ago, about my concern as a homeowner and a resident. So today, I'm going to put on my scientist hat. I'm a software developer. And let's talk about facts and science. I Googled today audiologist failures. And I will let you know, there are some people out there who think you should not go to an audiologist and you should try to treat yourself and your hearing issues. Now luckily, I know that you shouldn't try to Google the thing that you want to see in order to get that result. And so I'm not going to believe that. If I ever have any problems with my hearing, I'm going to the professional who's studied, who knows their business, knows what's up to date in the business. And I, like the previous testifiers, believe that the city traffic engineers know their business and we can trust them to do the work that they say they've done. Some of the studies that we've seen before, as the previous traffic engineer up here said, aren't really comparing apples to apples. The video on the Save Lincoln Streets website was from Los Angeles on, I believe, a seven-lane road, which is not what we're dealing with on Thirteenth Street at all. I'm sure it's very possible that there are areas where road diets don't work or where they create more problems than they help. But I believe the city has traffic engineers who've studied the issue and this specific segment of street, when they say that this isn't one of those cases. I'm honestly a bit embarrassed that this kind of anti-science attitude has arrived at the Lincoln City Council. And I'm really hoping that the city council as a whole chooses to reject the need to create their own facts or find their own facts instead of listening to the, the engineers who have done the research and have the education to trust when their research is showing them what they want to see versus what's actually best practices.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much, Ms. Lotman. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Jeff Moscaritolo. That's J E F F, M O S C A R I T O L O. I live at eleven twenty-six F Street, so right near Thirteenth Street, although I rarely use it for exactly all the reasons that we're talking about here. But I wanted to echo the arguments of my colleagues and provide a little story about something that happened to me just a couple of weeks ago that could have been a part of a statistic, but ended up thankfully not being. And that was that I was in my car and I was on D Street at the intersection that formerly had a light and no longer does. And I was trying to cross Thirteenth Street. And so I was doing that thing that we do where we try and gauge all of the different lanes of traffic, all four of them, in order to cross. I saw an opening and I crossed. And while I was crossing, I saw that there was a cyclist on the sidewalk who I hadn't seen earlier. And he was on a bike, so he was moving quicker than a pedestrian. Now maybe if there was a bike lane on Thirteenth Street, he would have been there and I would have been more apt to see him, but I didn't. And so I had to make this split-second decision of, do I stop in the middle of this intersection, of this four-lane road? Or do I try and keep going and avoid him? So I swerved to avoid him. He managed to stop, but fell off of his bike. I, you know, came to a stop later on D Street and came back to check if the guy was all right. And he seemed a little angry. But he, you know, was able to get back up on his bike, which he checked to, you know, see if it was still working. And he waved me off and kept on going. So this was a situation where fortunately it didn't end in catastrophe, but one split-second slower decision in a different direction or something like that. And my life is in jeopardy, his life is in jeopardy, and potentially other folks on Thirteenth Street. And he wasn't even technically on the street. He was just like next to the street. So that's just one more story of how all of the statistics that we hear about the accidents that happen on Thirteenth Street only encapsulate what actually does end up quote-unquote happening. But for every accident that does occur, there's probably some unmeasurable number of near misses, like the one that I experienced, that also occur. So that's maybe just one more thing to think about with how dangerous that street is and how in this particular instance, it's just one more example of how if there were fewer lanes of traffic, car traffic, and an explicit bike traffic lane going both ways, it would be a lot easier for someone like me in a car on D Street, crossing Thirteenth Street, to know what decision to make beforehand. So thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dustin Antonello. I'm with the Lincoln Independent Business Association. And I just want to apologize. There was some confusion before about supporters or opponents going first. So I stepped out for a few minutes and was wondering if the council would kindly let me.
Yes, we will. For clarification, you are testifying in support of the resolution, is that correct?
Yes, please continue, Mr. Antonello. Okay, thank you. The Lincoln Independent Business Association opposes the city of Lincoln's project to eliminate two lanes of traffic on Thirteenth Street heading into and out of downtown. With the rapid growth happening downtown in the Haymarket area, it does not make sense to make it even more challenging for vehicular traffic to access downtown. The city claims that the proposed road diet for Thirteenth Street will make it safer for pedestrians. But the manager of City Traffic Engineering recently told the Journal Star that similar projects across the country have actually resulted in traffic volumes increasing. How does increasing the amount of traffic make Thirteenth Street safer? If a constant line of traffic forms on South Thirteenth Street, it will be extremely difficult and dangerous for pedestrians to cross traffic. The city also claims that Thirteenth Street is a perfect candidate for a road diet because the current number of vehicles per day on Thirteenth Street can handle fewer lanes. But a recent Michigan State University study found that road diets cause drastic traffic delays when the road exceeds just ten thousand cars per day. Sections of Thirteenth Street already see more than ten thousand cars per day. Traffic will be further slowed by the frequent stops made by the number thirteen Star Trans bus on Thirteenth Street. The number thirteen bus currently makes eight stops on the stretch of Thirteenth Street that will be reconfigured. Not only will the constant stops made by the number thirteen bus impede the flow of traffic in the single lane available to vehicular traffic, it will also be extremely dangerous for cyclists as the buses will have to cross over the proposed bike lanes to reach bus stops. We also asked the city to provide us data on the number of crashes along the existing two-plus-one of, south of South Street. But they only provided us crash data from Saratoga Street to Arapaho Street, omitting the critical area from South Street to Saratoga Street where two lanes merge into a single lane. It is also deceptive to compare these two stretches along Thirteenth Street because Lincoln Mall to South Street is nearly a half-mile longer than the stretch from Saratoga Street to Arapaho Street. Road diets have been tried and failed across the country in cities large and small. In Gainesville, Phoenix, and Carolina Beach, government bodies were forced to ditch road diets and return to the old configuration after receiving an avalanche of complaints from residents. In Marvist, California, the residents were so upset about a failed road diet that they had begun a petition to recall the city council member who backed this misguided project. We want to make it clear that Leva does not oppose new bike lanes. We believe the community should work together to find ways to add safe bike lanes while preserving existing vehicle traffic lanes. To that end, Leva is formulating a committee of Leva member cyclists to contribute to the broader community discussion on the Lincoln Bike Plan, which plans to add nearly one hundred twenty miles of on-street bike lanes of the next decade, including separated bike lanes on G, R, Eleventh, and Fourteenth Streets, buffered bike lanes on Thirteenth, Sixteenth, Seventeenth, and Twenty-first Streets, and bike boulevards on B, F, L, R, Seventeenth, and Sumner Streets. Again, we do not oppose new bike lanes or trails. We firmly support cycling as a great means of transportation, exercise, and recreation. But the Thirteenth Street project is not safe and it's not good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Antonello?
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity.
We're happy to do that. Next testifier, please.
Hi there. My name is Stephanie Meyer. That's S T E P H A N I E M E Y E R. I live at one-four-two-four F, as in Frank. First would like to mention that I'm hearing a lot of residents here today say that their street is not safe now. I've been doing some driving more than usual lately. And one of the things I've noticed while on Thirteenth is what you've mentioned, Carl, about the staggering of cars. And my opinion of that is you stagger when you can. When, when there's not so much traffic, I'm not going to ride right next to someone. I'm going to stagger. And it seems as if maybe there's more road than there needs to be. And also, I would like us to always consider that everyday safety is more important than game day traffic. Everyday, people are struggling to cross the street and that is much more important than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Yeah, hi. My name is John Skinner, J O H N S K I N N E R. I live at ten twenty-six South Fourteenth Street. I'm a software developer. I work downtown. And since I live on Fourteenth Street, I cross and I traverse Thirteenth Street all the time, on a bike, on foot, and in a car. And I was real excited when I learned about the plan for Thirteenth Street because it seemed like a really logical update to how the street works. Traffic engineers have talked about how they don't build this type of street anymore. Like, and it makes, I think that that seems like a sensible finding in my observation when traffic is heavy, people who are in the left lane are mostly turning. So like, just replacing that with a dedicated turn lane seems like it's a gain for efficiency, like it would still be serving basically the same purpose, right? So you get bike lanes for free. And it's great. I'm glad that the science of traffic has discovered this fact. It seems natural that our street should be updated to reflect the new technology, right? I'm a technologist. I have to do that kind of thing for a living. And it seems like the city has to do it too. This should be routine and unremarkable update to the design of the street. However, voices emerged that spoke of it not as a routine update, but as an act of war. Like a culture war thing, I guess, like the war on Christmas or something like that? This framing suggests not some people who are trying to find out the truth about the best street design, not people who are trying to reason together, but people who are fighting and trying to sabotage or undermine each other. Councilman Christensen said, quote, "We need to maintain our ability to move in and out of downtown." And I guess by "we" he meant cars, right? Cyclists are not a part of the "we," evidently. They're an opposing side in a war. So the fact that the street would become safer for motorists is perhaps immaterial because of like having casualties on your own side in a war is fine. And the fact that research supports the change to Thirteenth Street probably doesn't matter if the object of war is to smash the other guy, to like beat the bikes, right? So I think that this culture war framing is really frightening when I'm acting as a cyclist. And I think it's kind of confusing too because I'm a motorist, so I don't even know which side in the war I'm supposed to be on. And it seems like you should get rid of that false dichotomy. Like, I know that the Leva guy already took that part of the website down because everybody hated it. But like, I can't help but think that he still thinks of it as a culture war where like people on one side live out in the suburbs and they have, they have, you know, professional jobs like audiologists or whatever, and then they drive in. And then like people that are like me, like, are the other side. So it kind of seems like we should just put aside that metaphor and pursue our actual best interests as a city rather than fight a costly war. This is a straightforward matter. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Anyone? Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
Hi, my name is Chris Saint Pierre, C H R I S, S T period, P I E R R E. I live at six-seven-one-five Wildry Road, so I do not live in the area that would be affected. But I am, I do primarily get around by bike. Some of you may actually be familiar with my previous work on bicycle car collisions in Lincoln. And so I've scraped LPD accident reports going back to 2012, collated them into statistics. And so I want to get a little wonkish here for a little bit because there's a type of collision that's really disturbingly common in Lincoln. It makes up about forty percent of our bike-car collisions, which is a motorist comes to an intersection with the plan to turn right and they look left where they expect traffic to be coming from. They don't look in the direction their car is going. And as they pull out and turn right, they hit a cyclist who is coming either along a two-way bike path or along the sidewalk. I've been hit twice like this. Lots of other people I know have been hit like this. So the safety gains of matched one-way bike lanes far surpass, you know, just putting some bike facility on the street. This is really sort of the best of all possible worlds because we're getting these matched one-way lanes, which means that cyclists will be riding with traffic rather than potentially against it. So that's a great gain. I want to make two more points. First, it's a little odd that bike lanes have acted as a... two more points. First, it's a little odd that bike lanes have acted as a lightning rod in this because, I mean, the road diet makes 13th Street better full stop, right? You could take those, those edges out and just throw them away, and it would still be a better street. But it, it, the wealth of a city is in its land, so we shouldn't throw it away, right? We get this free space to do something with. And so, bike lanes are going to bring in even more potential customers to the businesses along 13th Street, right? Not just the ones downtown, but there are businesses, local independent businesses there along 13th Street. It'll add another safe transportation mode for the people who live there. So, scapegoating these bike lanes doesn't really make any sense. And it's almost, as the previous speaker said, as if the resolution supporters are letting sort of this misplaced hatred of people who ride bikes speak louder than any sensible desire to, to build stronger neighborhoods and support local businesses and ensure a well-connected city. Secondly, I want to quote from the, the resolution where the applicant notes that, quote, "Reducing the number of lanes will affect traffic." Well, yeah, I mean, that's what my, my, my college English professor would have called a no crap statement, except he would have used a different word. Of course, it will affect traffic, but notice that, that the applicant doesn't say "will negatively affect it," right? Because I think he knows that that would be false. So, the resolution just seems to fear change simply because it is changed, not for any reason, not because of ill effects, even the fake ill effects that Leba tried to event. And so, as far as I can tell, this resolution is supported by people who just can't imagine anything being better, safer, richer, more friendly than it currently is today. So, I know I said two points, but I believe in under-promise and over-deliver, so I'm going to give you three. I want to quote from the Lincoln Journal Star from about this time last year, actually, when Councilwoman Lamb was joined by Councilmen Camp, Shob, and Christensen to support a resolution, which I also supported and corresponded with some of you about, to add a school zone on 84th and Layton. And the Journal Star said, quote, "Lamb has also suggested that if public works is concerned about putting a school zone in a 45 mile an hour speed zone, it could simply reduce the speed to 40 miles an hour along 84th Street." So, I hope that the four of you who voted in favor of that resolution can find in your hearts to remember why you supported potentially slowing down traffic on 84th in order to make things safer for kids there, and hopefully can apply some of that same reasoning here. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Dalziel. K.A.R.I.N.D.A.L.Z.I.E.L. I live at 720 Garfield, 68502. My comments come as a pedestrian and a driver in the neighborhood, and I'll keep them short because other people have said what, a lot of what I was going to say. But as a walker, I walk to the grocery store, Russ's, at 17th and Washington a lot. So, I walk down Garfield, and I cross a lot of busy streets, 9th, 10th, 13th, 16th, and 17th. Of those, 13th is the scariest, even though it's not the busiest, because I have to look two ways for traffic across four lanes of traffic. And one, a situation that has come up several times is that the, I or someone else will be waiting to cross. A car will see me, and they'll stop, and they'll try to wave me on. I call this the Midwestern wave. They're going against traffic, but they're trying to be nice. But then what will happen is if they have a car behind them, they just pull out right around them. And then, so, I'm, I'm going like this, like, no, no, I'm not going to cross. And, you know, because the other car has come and zoomed around. So, this is something that would greatly be improved by this. And just as a driver, I much prefer having a turn lane rather than stopping in a lane of traffic. I much prefer having a lane to pull into and wait till it's safe to turn. So, that, as a driver, I've lived all over Lincoln, and I've used 13th Street mainly to get to the businesses there. I usually use 9th or 10th in and out of downtown regardless of where I've lived in Lincoln. So, I just wanted to say that I found this whole debate around this frustrating and confusing. The opponents of the, of the project seem to be saying that those living in the neighborhood, that our opinions don't matter as much maybe as commuters coming in from out of town, and that we, that we in the neighborhood must deal with a dangerous route because otherwise it will inconvenience a few drivers. But even that seems to be false from the studies that I've read. So, please vote against this resolution and allow this project to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Janik. S.A.R.A.H.J.A.N.I.A.K. I'm here tonight, oh, sorry, address 1223 North 9th Street, number 201. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Bicycle Lincoln Board members. Bicycle Lincoln's goal is to support people who ride bikes in Lincoln. With that in mind, we value safety, health, and connectivity of everyone in the community. Within the bicycling community, we have consistently heard the need for better connections within our on-street networks. The 13th Street improvements that have been proposed provide that connectivity with minimal cost and without requiring extensive construction. The improvements to 13th Street will also increase safety. Research consistently shows that this type of link configuration leads to fewer crashes by reducing conflict points between vehicles, pedestrians, and people on bikes. The Bicycle Lincoln Board members support these improvements not just because it would benefit people on bikes, but because it offers benefits to people who drive, bike, and walk in the neighborhood. So, we urge you to vote against the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Jillian Carter. J.I.L.L.I.A.N.C.A.R.T.E.R. I live at 3062 Bein Street, 68503. I don't live in the neighborhood, barely drive in the neighborhood, any more than anyone else in Lincoln does, but I have a vested interest because I am a Lincolnite. And I think that that's the interest that we all have here. We want everyone in our city, children, families, everyone, to be as safe as possible. And I think that the research is completely clear on that. I think that little Marin, who I think had to leave probably because it was bedtime, said that if there was a problem, that she had faith that our community would come together and solve that problem. And I think that that's what we're doing here. I think it's what you did two years ago when you decided to go ahead with this project, and I think it's what we should be reaffirming today. I don't think that any new information has come to light in those two years to make us think that it wasn't a good decision then, because it was. I think that there has been some unfortunate opposition to it, but I think that if we stay the course and say, okay, this is the research, this is the research that we trust, the scientific research that we trust, these are the members of the community who have to live in this neighborhood that we trust and want to hear, the fact that, well, when I started planning this speech, there wasn't any opposition spoken, but it was just unfortunately out of turn because of some confusion. But there was, there was one person speaking in opposition, you know? And then there was one neutral, because he had a lot of hats to wear. But other than that, I mean, the people are speaking overwhelmingly. And so, I want to have Marin's faith that you were hearing that and that you were going to oppose this resolution. My faith is already a little shaken by the fact that so many people are here tonight and have to even have this discussion, but I am crossing my fingers that you're going to restore that faith for me. I'm looking at most of you in the eye. Some of you aren't looking in my eye, but generally, I have faith, thank you, Mr. Shob, that, that you will do the right thing and oppose this resolution. Thank you.
Sorry, I was watching the clocks. Any questions of this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hello, my name is Jewel. As you probably know, also, I wear a lot of hats, one of those being that I am a community builder for a South of Downtown community development organization. So, you've heard from some of my colleagues, and you know that our job is to speak to residents, engage with residents, to build relationships with them regarding their needs, their wants, their desires, and their vision. So, just speaking on behalf of that, I think just the, the neighbors and the residents here can speak in obvious support or nah, speak in obvious opposition of this resolution. But the, the other hat that I wear is that I recently had to stop working at the F Street Community Center just because I had so many things on my plate. And I can't necessarily express, like, how much I miss my kids and just being around them. And it's only been maybe two or three weeks since I've been gone, and I just can't imagine if I never got to see them again because the street just was too big of a problem, or if it was just too much of an inconvenience for, you know, out-of-community commuters, or it was too long, or it slowed the traffic, to think that, you know, one of the kids that I've taken part in shaping and mentoring could be gone, trying to go to one of the farmer's markets or block parties happening at the F Street Church mere feet away could be gone. Like, that's a big deal. So, I, I don't think that, I just, I honestly, I just don't think that individuals who, who live outside of the neighborhood have the same weight in their voice and their purpose as those who live inside the neighborhood and have children and grandchildren that live inside this neighborhood and absolutely need for crosswalks and places of transit to be as safe as possible for the youth that are developing in our community. So, so, of course, for the reason of me being a community builder, but also for the love that I have for my kids that I see crossing that street every day, I am in deep opposition of the resolution to, to keep things as they are because it's already proved that it isn't working properly.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Questions of this testifier? Thank you very much. You get to follow that.
It's okay.
She's awesome. My name is Julie Harris. J.U.L.I.E.H.A.R.R.I.S. I'm the executive director of the Nebraska Bicycling Alliance. Our Lincoln office is 1941 Y Street. Our, our organization is the statewide bicycle advocacy organization for the state, and our mission is to cultivate a safer, more bicycle-friendly state through partnerships, education, and advocacy. Part of my job as director of this organization is to stay on top of national best practices and in policy and in community design that can help us to achieve our mission and make our streets safer. The project on South 13th Street fits the bill on both counts. You've heard many, many people come up here and speak very eloquently tonight about what this will do for their neighborhood. And I would just like to say that, you know, as a student of public administration before I was even a bike-ped advocate, this is how city government should work. The city identified a problem. The Public Works Department did the research. The Planning Department weighed in. The community was involved. A grant was found. And I have to say that that's, that's not always the case. That you have grant money to do this is, is amazing. You have an existing master plan. You have a complete streets plan. You have a policy that this fits right into. It's consistent with everything that you have. It's in your CIP. This is how local government is supposed to work. This is exactly how we would want it to work. So, I really urge you to oppose this resolution. It's very clear that the, the people that are most involved with this need to, need and want to see their street to be safe. I would also add that, you know, I'm, I'm glad to hear that Leba is excited about all of the various projects that are coming, hopefully in the upcoming city bike plan, that they listed off in great detail, and we look forward to their support on all of those projects. And because a lot of those projects will be put forward for the exact same reason that the 13th Street project has been put forward, because it will create a safer street for all users, it will put traffic at an appropriate speed while maintaining the efficiency of movement. So, we look forward to partnering with them as those new plans come along. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Questions for this testifier? Thank you again.
Thanks.
Next testifier, please.
I'm Julie Sonderup. J.U.L.I.E.S.O.N.D.E.R.U.P. My home address is 2835 O'Reilly Drive, and I am here as a Lincoln independent business owner. We are Leba members, but they do not speak for me on this. They don't speak for us at all. We have Cycleworks, Moose's Tooth, and TJK Investments. And I would say it's a no-brainer that as Cycleworks, we're going to say more bike lanes, the better. Obviously, I'm tired of our friends and customers being hit unnecessarily on poor roadways. Aside from that, TJK, we, we build apartments, and I can tell you that our, Lincoln is trying to recruit young professionals to move here. We don't like losing our young professionals that just graduate from here, but we have to be an appealing city for them. Bike lanes are a trigger for them. They absolutely want more. It speaks to them as a community they want to live in. They want walkable, ridable neighborhoods. They want small-town feel in each of those neighborhoods, and they want to safely get to and from those neighborhoods. They don't all want to drive. Some of them have cars and bikes, but they prefer the feel of the neighborhood that you can safely bike and walk in. That is absolutely hands down what we're seeing in our 24 to 40s, and it's exactly who we are trying to engage. But that is a commonality with all of them. So, I just wanted to give you a different perspective. We are opposed to the resolution. We are for the safe plan, and we believe safety is not actually a question anymore. I think we kind of all know that's a thing. But as a businessperson, this makes much more sense to create that in Lincoln than to try not to have it. So...
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you. I'm not sure if that young man's racing up here. No, he's not. Are there others that wish to testify in opposition to this resolution? Would anyone like to testify in support of this resolution? We kind of locked you out early on. So, anyone?
I'd actually like to, but I just can't go up there. Is that all right?
I'd like to acknowledge someone raised their hand. They'd like to testify, but they don't feel comfortable coming forward.
I'm for the improvement, not so...
I understand. In support of the resolution? No. She's in opposition.
I'm in opposition.
Okay.
All right, so, can you hear me?
No, it would be better if you could come forward. Can... Thank you.
My name is Christine Gibson. I go by Kristy. I live at 1841 Perkins Boulevard.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
It's hard for me to have my glasses off. I'm kind of ashamed of just what I wrote, so I'm going to add a little bit to the end of the email that I wrote you all.
Could you have a chair?
That's all right. I'm all right. So, my beloved Randy Gibson was one of our state and city's top bicycle commuters until he was plowed down in broad daylight by a drunk man driving a car vehicle while cycling last September 23rd. I'm going to intermit something right here and just say that I am so offended by this, wearing cars that I've, I've shook until I am literally unable to dysfunction. It's upsetting to me. So, whoever came up with that phrase, I really hope it wasn't you, Roy. So highly offensive. Has there ever been one pedestrian that's caused or one bicyclist who's caused a driver of a vehicle in Lincoln to be killed? I'd like to know that. I don't have that information. I just wrote this quickly because I want to support everyone here. I don't really have a, a working brain right now. I can't really share anything without it being filtered through my grief. So, to continue with my letter here, we were married 27 years, and we have two surviving children, Sophia and Russ. Russ and I also, Russ and I both ride a bicycle. I don't wish our loss on any of you or any of those that are dear to you. It's a pain that no human should know. One promise I have made to my beloved Randy is that I will speak my loud voice in advocating for increased bicycle safety in and around Lincoln. For over 20 years, Randy commuted from our Irvingdale neighborhood house to his office in the Haymarket. I know from his expertise and decades of cycling experience, he always considered 13th Street a death trap, asking both Russ and I to not take it on our bikes. Now that Randy is tragically gone and our city is looking to improve this area of commuting, I felt the need to speak up. This new plan makes for a safer road for cyclists, from experts to those less experienced recreational cyclists, those who cycle strictly for commuting to work or school, and of course, for our younger cyclists. And when I say cyclists, I don't really like the word biker, so I mean all the neighborhood children who ride their bikes to school. I also feel this will make intersections safer for pedestrians in this high-traffic area of town. And then I said I'd be at the meeting, but I didn't want to talk. And I am going to go ahead and talk beyond that because I kind of feel ashamed that when I just wrote this, I just was thinking, you know, of Randy commuting 20 years from our home by Irving to the Haymarket and the various routes that he would take, the safer routes. So, I know that this would have been an issue for him. But I also ride my bike when I can't downtown, and Russ does. And we also frequent that neighborhood. We go to the farmer's market, F Street Farmer's Market. Sophia and Russ and I, multiple times a week, eat at El Chaparro. And I will also go to the Renzo that's right there. I've walked and ridden through that neighborhood and driven multiple, multiple years, and I can tell you that I care deeply. So, when I wrote this letter, I, I didn't mean to be selfish and just thinking to myself as a commuter outside of the neighborhood, I do care about the people... and just thinking to myself of, as a commuter outside of the neighborhood, um, I do care about the people and what everyone said. I can tell you just multiple times, sitting in the car at El Chaparro, watching the kids try to navigate that street going back and forth. It's a, it's a very, very big issue. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Others who wish to testify? I thought he was coming forward. Faked me out. Uh, seeing no one else coming forward, we have a couple more agenda items. Teresa, can we move to our next item, please?
Yes, we'll move on to Item 5E, authorizing the use of surplus funds from the city's one-quarter cent sales tax for public safety to acquire new fire apparatus.
Just a moment. Mr. Christian, Councilman Christiansen?
Um, after consulting with the mayor's office, I'm going to move that we delay this with public hearing till the 17th of September. And continue our hearing tonight if anybody wants to speak.
Okay, that's a motion, right?
It's a motion.
A motion by Councilman Christiansen, and a second by Councilwoman Lamb.
This is continue public hearing?
Till the 17th of September.
With action.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other, other discussion about this motion?
I'll just explain a little bit.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
We, we are not in a situation right now because of the budget and the money del, uh dedicated to fire apparatus. We're not in an emergency decision mode on this item. And uh, we can afford to allow the people, the parties involved in looking at some of this, these funds to be expended on other items in the construction and equipping of the fire stations, to have a little bit more time to get to the conclusion that we hope they can come to.
And that was the 17th?
17th.
Other discussion of motion to delay?
Could we hear from the administration?
Yes.
Did we get a second on that one?
Yes.
I just, Councilwoman Lamb, second.
Thank you.
Rick Hoppy, Mayor's Office. Uh, yes, Ms. Gaylor Baird, what is your question?
Uh, he just had mentioned the discussion in consultation with the administration. I wondered if you had anything to add?
Sure. I've had a lot of conversations with several of you over the past few days. Um, the last couple of discussions that were had, I understand that Public Safety Director Tom Casti reached out to Mr. Eskridge and talked about uh is the possibility that we delay this a couple weeks. I know there was some discussion potentially about delaying it even further than that. Um, I think Mr. Casti was concerned that if we did want to move forward with the fire apparatus, that it be done in conjunction with the other fire apparatus that were placed in the uh city budget so we could get the best value. Um, I think he asked Mr. Eskridge if that would be something that he would entertain. And then Mr. Christiansen contacted us and asked also if the 17th would be an appropriate time to go ahead and, for a delay. So I would tell you that um, we're happy to go with anything that you all think is appropriate. Um, we're not living and dying on this hill about the delay. So if the 17th works, great. If there's some other ideas about how we do this, fantastic. I think our primary concern is, is twofold. Uh, number one, you may have received a letter in your packet from the Fire Union President Ron Truba. Uh, Ron is part of one of those committees that was reviewing some of the work of the fire stations being built with these funds. And they had a few more questions and a meeting that was being put together uh with the Fire Administration. We wanted that meeting to go ahead and happen, and it happened after tonight. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that there was at least enough delay to have that happen. And then again, the other piece being if we are gonna move forward on fire apparatus, probably is the best course of action to do it with the other pieces that we're going to put on order.
Thank you.
Other questions for, for city staff? Anyone else like to discuss, any other discussion about the motion, motion to delay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoppy. Seeing no other discussion, I would ask that we go to the end of resolutions, right?
We gotta vote on the...
Vote on the motion to delay?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that. Let's call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. That concludes our public hearing on resolutions. We can vote on these items.
That's what I was looking for.
Item 5A is approving Luckies as a Kino satellite location introduced by Raybold.
Second. Got a motion by Councilwoman Camp, second by Councilwoman Christiansen. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item 5B is the report of claims for the period of August 1st through the 15th introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
We're gonna go motion by Councilwoman Christiansen, and a second by Councilwoman Camp. Discussion?
We do have a motion to amend number one on this item. And it is to remove Darrell Zerlin from the list of denied claims. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Lamb, second by Councilwoman Christiansen on the motion to amend. This will remove one of the claims from today's item. I think that the uh claimant wanted to appear, and there were some scheduling difficulties, so we'll carry that over. Uh, additional discussion on the motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes, and that was on the motion to amend.
Correct.
And now we'll go back to the original motion?
And the motion to amend passed six to zero.
Thank you.
All right, on the main motion, Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next then, Item 5C is the services agreement with HDR Engineering introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second. Here are a motion by Councilwoman Camp, second by Councilwoman Christiansen. Discussion of the motion? Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
Can't help note the irony of getting water from a utility whose acronym spells mud. Um, I do wanna just say, I think this is one of the most critical issues for our community's future. And we all need to be thinking about how to be good stewards of our natural resources and about how to ensure that they are in abundant supply for future generations. And I'm very pleased that the new Transportation and Utilities Department is exploring this concept with our potential partners up in Omaha.
Councilwoman Christiansen, this is a good thing. Mud is good? That was funnier in my head. Uh, any other conversation about this motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next then is Item 5D, 13th Street, introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion by Christiansen, and a second by Councilwoman Lamb. Discussion of the motion? Councilwoman Christiansen?
Well, I wanna say that tonight, uh, I heard residents give thoughtful and reasoned arguments and personal stories about the issues surrounding South 13th Street. So I am willing to give this a try and have our city staff measure the changes to the traffic patterns and safety on South 13th Street and other north and south arterials to and from downtown. So I will oppose.
Yeah, I'm supposed to stifle that. Um, Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. So I gotta tell ya that um, I was impressed and moved by the neighborhood testimony, but I'll tell you, one of the emotions I was moved to was I was furious that the city took out a light that was because it was damaged and didn't replace it, that there were no crosswalks put in for the safety of these children, and that it took uh perhaps something like putting bike lanes in to have uh our, our Public Works Department decide to do this project. I did hear also testimony getting praise to our, uh, to our traffic engineers, but as someone reminded us, these are the same traffic engineers who opposed the safety zone, uh, school zone uh on North 84th Street, where 620 children have to cross that street in order to go to school. Where we had 800 signatures on petitions in favor of that school zone, where four of us on the council voted in favor of the school zone, and it still isn't built. In fact, the outcome was that the traffic engineers decided it needed further study. So I find myself quite incensed by uh the fact that we needed to get to this place uh in order for residents to stay safe. I am concerned that it is not part of a coordinated effort. I am concerned that as we, if we start reducing lanes and all these seven other roads that are downstairs, that are downtown, that we're gonna find more traffic and more traffic driven to 13th Street. Um, I also couldn't help note that when there was a recent, uh, just in fact, this last weekend, a tour of one of the neighborhoods down there, it was 11th to 13th. There was no crossing 13th. For the tour that was down there, there seems to be this neighborhood function. I do um, I do uh absolutely wanna compliment my colleague for being willing to uh, to move aside on this. I do know it's just a painting of lines, and I wanna note that because I think that if, in fact, it doesn't work as the uh, as the residents believe it should, that we need to look at uh actually replacing it, doing something else. But, but even more importantly to me, from what I heard tonight, even more important than striping those lines or turning it to three lanes, we need to have crosswalks there. That's what I heard first and foremost. Those kids need to be able to get safely across 13th Street to the F Street Rec Center and to their schools, and uh we need to, we need to look at that more closely. If that's not part of this plan, it should be. And I would think that the residents will speak up loudly for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. So whenever I find myself involved in a conflict, uh, what, what I always do is I, I try to, try to figure out, okay, not what the positions are, but, but what are our interests? What are the things that, that we're really eager to, to have resolved? And so, so when I think about those interests and, and this uh context, I, I think about businesses, first of all, and uh there are businesses currently along 13th Street. And the neighborhood would like to see more businesses uh to serve the neighborhood there. And by having a turn lane on 13th Street, that, that helps. That helps people to get into and out of, out of the businesses in, in that area. So that's, that's a win. The second thing is, is in the neighborhood, as Cindy mentioned, the neighborhood where there are children, also seniors, others who are traveling on foot every day, trying to cross that, that busy street. Uh, this makes it safer. That's another win. For those bicyclists, there's a little bit of division in, in the House on bicyclists and, and what plan is safer. The good thing is uh there are options. And you can choose to go on 13th Street if that's done, or you can choose to, to go, as they say, on a different lesser-traveled road. A win. A win for the community to have those options. And last of all, we've heard from uh the larger community about South 13th Street and the desire to have better access, safer access, to and from downtown. And we've heard from our traffic engineers, not only our traffic engineers, but other traffic engineers, who have told us that, that this plan is actually safer for cars uh as well. A win there. So it's a win, win, win. Just like the state fair. Step right up. Everybody wins.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
I just wanna preface my remarks with um the fact that because we've had so much inquiry about this project even prior to this hearing, I have back and forth with the engineers about these crosswalks that have been mentioned, and they have active warning device crossings, improvements planned for crossw, rocks specifically at the F Street Rec Center and likely at either the north or south leg of D Street. So I, I think it's good to get that out there and make sure it's clear that there are those kinds of improvements absolutely planned and have been in the works for a while. And I thought I was gonna have to talk about how we, as policymakers, have to weigh sort of the safety of residents versus convenience of, of non-residents. I don't really have to talk about that because really what I think is a remarkable bubble about tonight, what is so remarkable is, is the power of so many individual voices calling for changes that they wanna see happen in their city, and having their voices be heard and having that make a difference. It's a beautiful thing. Makes me feel proud of this process tonight, and thank you to all who've weighed in on either side of the issue and helped us make a really informed decision about what to do for the best interests of the safety of our community.
Thank you. So everyone had a chance to speak? Do you wish us to? Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Wait.
Christiansen?
Okay, so let's get, so...
Uh, yes?
Wait, we'll start over again.
Uh, Camp?
No.
Christiansen?
No.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
No.
Shob?
No.
Motion lost, zero to six.
Yes, Councilman Christiansen?
Before we leave the resolutions portion, I'm gonna move that we suspend the rules and act today to place the mayoral term limits petition on the November 2018 ballot.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Christiansen, and a second by Councilwoman Camp to suspend the rules. Is there a discussion of that? This is my first suspend the rules. Would you?
It needs five votes.
This is new to me. Did you wish to speak, Councilwoman Lamb?
I did. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah. Um, so in suspending the rules, I think we're looking at the fact that, and I guess maybe I wanted to ask Jeff the question too. Um, becau, we received, and I verified that we received the uh certificate of verification of the petition signatures on Friday from the Election Commissioner, correct?
Yes, I believe that's right.
Okay. And, and under the um, the constitution, the state constitution, then um this body, the city council or governing authorities, shall put that on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay. And so that's not discretionary?
That's true. It's a ministerial function by the council.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
Thanks, Jeff. Is, is it not also true that in the early 2000s, when a petition came forward about ambulance service, that that was uh put on the council agenda for public hearing and a vote?
Wasn't here then.
Okay.
Uh, what I would tell you is that resolutions that come before this council, all legislation typically has a public hearing. Uh, we have had situations where if we've suspended the rules in order to vote immediately, it doesn't happen very often. I think it's fair to say this council uh generally just favors that action. An exception that some of you probably remember would be, for example, when LPS's office had the fire and we're looking rather desperately for some office space, and one of the office spaces that was available was the Municipal Service Center. It was a need to enter into lease arrangement between the city and LPS. And because of the time element there, this council did vote to suspend the rules there. But I can't, because I wasn't um a city attorney then, I can't speak to what the nature of the hearing was on that particular occasion.
The point was that even though there was a ministerial duty to put that forward to the voters, there was a, a public hearing on that item as a resolution?
Uh, correct. I, I believe that, that the fact that it's a ministerial function does not take away the public's right in general to be heard on anything that comes before the council.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yes. Um, Jeff, how, how many people need to agree to suspend?
That's why I came up. It takes five votes to suspend the rules. That's what this body chooses to do.
Okay. And when we, I guess, I, it, it's really rare. Um, anybody who served with Jonathan Cook knows that it's really rare in the past that we would, would suspend the rules. It happened on just a couple of occasions I can recall, but I can't ever recall when we've suspended the rules without a hearing. Uh, we, we might have a first reading and a hearing on the same date, but, but never can I remember when we would have a first reading and then vote on it without a hearing. Uh, any knowledge that, that you have about such a...
And I apologize. I wasn't paying that close attention. Were you, I don't know that the motion was to not have a hearing? Was it? Okay. Uh, I don't know of any either, but again, you know, my, my time before you is, is limited to about four years. So there may have been periods before that.
All right, well...
Certainly.
Yeah.
No, we've always had a...
No, we've always had a public hearing on it.
I, I understand it's a ministerial duty, uh, but we've just had a, a hearing where 32 people, if I counted right, uh, came forward and expressed their concerns about, you know, something that's important to their community. And certainly, uh, term limits in terms of, of, uh, our mayor is, is important, I think, to the people I, I oppose.
Thank you. I'll go to Councilman Camp first and Councilwoman Lamb.
I'm concerned here, I've got the history hat on, but this, this is a ministerial thing. We had, uh, you know, four to 5,000 people sign the petition, like, or well over 4,300 validated telling us to put on the ballot. And if we do something else other than do that, we're going to get into political gamesmanship and this. You know, this is why we're having some difficulties, Carl, is when people do things like this. You know, this is setting up as a three ring circus and I think that's an affront to the citizens. We, as city elected officials, have no, we cannot use these positions or this time or these resources to campaign. And that's what this is going to boil down to. You know, and I don't know if I can partake because I'm thinking of running for mayor and I'm not going to utilize the crown or the, not the crown, but the, uh, title of my city council membership to do things like that. I think that the citizens have spoken, they were validated by the election commissioner and we have a duty to put it on the ballot. It's just what it is. So if you want to create, you, you're, you're trying to create a political environment that is not necessary and the voters and beyond this meeting, when you put it on the ballot, then that's when the campaigning for or against comes about, but not at this dais, not in this room, not in this building. So I think we, we do need, we can suspend the rules. I think there's some generalization made here on suspension of the rules that is, is not accurate and, um, you know, we've got a duty to vote it. You know, we, we got taken to the court by the mayor because we didn't vote on the levy. And I don't think we want to get down that path again, so.
So we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. Councilwoman, I will get to you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lamb was next to speak. Our motion?
No, I spoke.
Oh, you did? You're good? Councilwoman Gaylor Baird.
Well, I was just so pleased with our willingness to listen to people and hear what they say, which I do believe is our major function as the legislative body, is to provide public hearing with the operative word being hearing. We've, we have a ministerial duty to pass that tax rate and we have a public hearing on it anyway. We had a, a, a charter amendment about ambulance service and even if we had to pass that on to the voters with a ministerial duty, we had a public hearing on it. It's essential to what we do. It's a service we provide to our community and we did that service tonight and now all of a sudden we're turning around on the next item and trying to shut people out of their opportunity to speak to something that affects them. I can't support that.
So.
Benny, if I may?
Yes, please.
To answer Larryian's question back in 2000, we did have, um, an initiative petition concerning the creation of an emergency medical authority, um, that was directing, um, us to place it on the ballot. That happened on September 18th. We did have a, um, public hearing on it on the 18th and there's been several times in the past when we've had initiative or referendum petitions come before the city council for action to place it on the agenda or to place it on the ballot.
I have another question for Jeff and Legal, if you could. It's actually a multi, so right now we're talking about a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes.
And we have a meeting that's been publicly advertised and scheduled for Wednesday. What happens to that meeting if we suspend the rules and vote not to have that meeting on Wednesday?
Well, you could cancel that meeting and I would, I would ask you to reflect back on two years ago when we did have that issue as far as the, the tax levy and we were waiting for a court opinion that would have affected the, um, what this council would do. And so because that was pending and we weren't sure when it was going to come down, we actually scheduled a number of special meetings similar to the one on Wednesday and then we canceled them if we weren't ready to go or if we had, actually had the meeting and voted, then anything following that was canceled. So I, I think the answer to your question is if you would vote tonight to suspend the rules and vote to put it on the ballot, you could just cancel the meeting on Wednesday. That wouldn't be a problem.
And this question, follow-up question for you and kind of Teresa. For those people in the community who have planned to be here on Wednesday for a public hearing, do you hear from those residents and are they excited that we canceled meetings?
Mr. Chair, that's not our.
I can't, that was kind of a loaded question. I apologize. I withdraw the question. Thank you, Mr. Camp. That was, I apologize to you. And that was, that was bad Benny, bad Benny. So any additional discussion on the motion to suspend the rules and place the item on the ballot that was one whole notion?
No, then we'd have to vote on it.
Motion just to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
She said nothing.
Dabsen?
Chip stained.
Shob?
No.
Ty vote.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. All right, so we'll move ahead with our hearing on Wednesday.
Wednesday, 5:30.
Yes.
Yes, 5:30 PM.
As advertised, 5:30 on Wednesday and we've scheduled that for a short period of time. That'll be the only agenda item we discuss.
I'd caution, yes, politicalization of that. That's a dangerous line that you're going across.
Thank you, councilman. I appreciate that. So our next agenda item, are we ready to go to?
Item 5E, we continued public hearing in action to the 17th. Next then is our public hearing ordinance's second reading. I'll call items 6A and B together. They are approval of a purchase agreement by the city for the acquisition of the fee title for property generally located at 1318 M Street owned by St. Mary's Parish and the approval of a purchase agreement with Joseph Institute for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 2143 O Street.
Well, uh, they can be handled separately or together at the chair's request, but they are both pieces of work that we've been working on. Members of the city council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, this is dropping the other shoe of a story that you heard rather extensively last week about which there are significant differences of opinion, which probably haven't changed in the intervening week. As I told you then, there is a larger strategy for getting a garage downtown. And last week we focused on the acquisition of land on block 65 around the Sharp Building. This tonight is a portion of that land. It isn't the garage that's on the land, it's not the surface parking lots, it's the land under the garage that is owned by St. Mary's Parish. I've met with the Monsignor, I've met with Father Dietrich, I've met with their legal representatives. This is a willing seller and a willing buyer and the price is $610,000 and it works out to about 23.80 cents a square foot. For downtown land is a good, fair, reasonable price. The church thinks it's fair, we think it's fair. In the end, well, we'll be using this land in the event the council were to agree with the creation of a new large downtown garage. It would occupy, the garage would occupy this land and this portion of the land would be available for either sale or surface parking or some other kind of development that the city might make use of it. I'd be happy to answer questions. I do know that we hold over until next week, or I'm sorry, the 10th for voting and I think this is just simply verse two of a story that you've heard before, but I'd be happy to answer questions about this particular land and its origins if you wish.
Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing. Items, anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, uh, let's go to item 7.
All right, if not, item 7A, creating a clean energy assessment district which shall be known as the Greater Nebraska Pace District to establish definitions to provide for financing, administration and collections relating to.
I'm sorry, my little strange dance here in front of you was because I thought the second item would be handled separately because I haven't explained a second separate piece of property that we'd like to sell. I didn't want to jump over it.
I'm sorry, I thought we did both of them together. Please, would you talk to the second item? We're going back to 6B now.
Thank you. Uh, there's a, a building on O Street called the Via Van Bloom Building. Uh, it was taken over by the city when we did the Antelope Valley Project and our public works folks and city folks were there managing the process in the creation of the Antelope Valley. Once the Antelope Valley was done, there was no further use for it and public works continues to own it, but not use it. It is distinguished only by the fact that it's relatively rundown and that there's a fish in the bubble window of the front. The artist who went and put the bubble fish in the middle, which I thought was a whimsical delightful addition to the city, said, "I'm interested in buying the building." And then he got inside. And that was the end of that conversation. Um, some of this is just stuff that's left over from when public works was there. Some of it is in fact significant damage in the foundation, um, in the boarded up windows, uh, in the internal operation of the building. And in fact, uh, three years ago when we did an appraisal and they were taking a look at it and they, and they decided the income value of the property was $115,000, uh, we stopped doing anything about it and we've had three people that have been through saying, "I don't like that building," until they opened the door. None of them have returned to make offers for the land, but we have had three offers of purchase because we put it as part of our surplus property, put up a sign, encouraged people to, to make offers. Speedway offered us 25, Joel Sartori offered us 40, and we are prepared to sell to the Catholic Social Services, which is the next door neighbor for $50,000, which is the most that we've been offered. It's a headache, it's a white elephant for us and it has this distinguishing characteristic. There is no legal access to the building from the backside because all of the land behind the building for back of house, garbage removal, parking of an electric repair, you know, truck to work on the building, is covered by land owned by Catholic Social Services. It is a landlocked building. It has one logical owner, it's Catholic Social Services and we're going to sell it to them for $50,000 if the council would agree. I will say this, this has been on the market for a long time and this is the first time we've had offers and this is the best offer we've had. I see no chance that we're going to get a better offer.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the catch.
Now can I go to 7? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item 7A, creating a clean energy assessment district to be known as the Pace District to establish definitions, provide for financing, administration and collections relating to energy efficiency improvements and renewable energy systems.
Hi, Chris Connolly, Chief Assistant City Attorney. Um, I'm not going to do a presentation, uh, just wanted to, uh, get the, uh, council up to speed on what we've been doing. Uh, Councilman Christensen was gracious enough to give us some extra time to, um, uh, discuss things internally and, uh, look at operations, um, in other areas such as Omaha. We've had that, we've had that opportunity to talk with Omaha and, and look at Missouri a little bit. Uh, and so we have some ideas on what we think we need to do going forward. We're not entirely ready yet. We, and we are going to be, we, there's a motion to amend, I believe, that will be proposed granting us some additional time to, to be able to fully implement this because there's a lot of vetting that needs to go on, there's forms that need to be developed and procedures that need to be, uh, put together. And so, uh, we're in a, we're going to, um, move forward in doing that and, um, but otherwise, uh, I don't, I don't have any other statements to make. Uh, I'll be happy to try and answer whatever questions you might have though.
And I'm John Carles with the mayor's office and just to piggyback off what Chris said. To be clear though, we, we're satisfied with the ordinance, with adopting the ordinance and the implementation part is just what we're talking about in terms of identifying people, where does paperwork go, creating the actual intake process.
Questions for either one of these young men? Councilwoman Lamb?
So I'm sorry, I'm not clear, are we being asked to delay this or would you, would you benefit from a delay?
No, no, we're, we're okay.
Thank you.
We, we just want it passed and give us a little bit of time to get up and running then.
I think the question's about implementation time, right?
Get people identified, which offices do it, form the committees to actually process the paperwork, that such.
Okay, sure, I want to verify a couple of things. Number one is this will not be available for residential properties. This is simply for commercial properties.
Their apartment buildings of four units or more are going to be considered commercial, but in terms of single family dwellings, no, that's correct, or, or townhomes, that's correct.
Okay, and then the, um, lien that this puts on the property is a tax lien, so that takes first place priority over a mortgage?
It will, yes, the lien that would get put on the property, um, first of all, in or, on commercial property, you have to get a subordination agreement with whoever the first lender is. Okay? So this will go into first position over any other lenders. It won't come ahead of real estate taxes. Um, but if there's a, a lien that, well, that's where the lien comes from and so it will come ahead of everything else but real estate taxes. And then there's a set, an assessment that would go with it and so that if the, uh, real estate taxes had to be sold, the assessment will travel with the real estate taxes, but still never be ahead of the real estate taxes.
Councilman Camp?
Yeah, this, this really changes the whole dynamics of our lending system where you have an institution, a bank, for example, loans and gives a first mortgage on property and everyone knows the government gets its taxes. But now having this as being a potential lien there that supersedes the first and second or whatever other ones changes. And I know I got contacted by a couple of financial institutions and just, they were very concerned that this changes the dynamics and in fact they said that they will not, interestingly enough, they said literally they will not deal with loans where there's a pay loan. So, and I hadn't realized the priority there, so.
And.
There, there's concern there, which our property law has been historically set up that you get a prioritization and now this would do that.
It, but it won't be automatic. It's still up to the applicant to get the subordination agreement. If they can't get that, then they're not going to be eligible for a pay loan.
The lender is a required participant in the process.
So the, the holder of the first mortgage then could defeat it?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
They would sign off.
And, and any other?
Yep. I believe there's a signatory on the document.
Right.
Pardon me?
I believe there's a signatory on the document, on the contract.
We have, they have to be able to demonstrate their consent to the arrangement.
Now, as I recall when we've had testimony, another information presented that this type of, uh, loan has been utilized elsewhere. Has this situation ever arisen or is it just too new a program?
Well, for Nebraska, it's new. Uh, Omaha has it, they have one pro, one project that is now moving forward. Uh, and I, we haven't examined all the details of that to, to see exactly how many commercial lenders were involved. Uh, but it is being used in other parts of the country. It is being used in, in Missouri and Wisconsin. Uh, it's very popular, um, on the west coast, uh, and it's pretty popular on the east coast. Uh, and so, uh, so there are programs that are moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for these two testifiers? This is a public hearing, would anyone else like to speak on this item?
Here's some handouts.
Thank you.
Anyone who knows me knows I always have handouts. Well, my name is Senator Ken Har, I live at 1808 Folkways Boulevard and we just recently moved back into the city. So, uh, we're very happy to be here. I use my title Senator because it's my one retirement benefit from being in the legislature for eight years. Well, first of all, I want to do some thank yous to Councilman Christensen for introducing this. I want to thank you for that, uh, for the opportunity to speak and also for your service. Uh, I sat on that side of the dais for eight years and, uh, I know you get paid, but it's, it's a great public service and I thank you for that. Um, well, one of the most valuable tools that a state that a state legislator has is called priority bill designation. Because, I mean, every year, there are like 500 bills introduced into the legislature, and they go through committee, and then a lot of them never... There just isn't time on the floor to act on these bills. But every senator gets one priority bill designation. And that means if your bill gets out of committee, that it will go through first, second, and final reading one way or the other. And so in this bill, LB 1012, that the legislature passed, which authorized PACE, I gave it my priority designation. So I want to tell you, I think it's very important, and I think it's very doable. And I've talked to actually quite a few residents who would like to use it. That includes, and I know this is just commercial and not residential, but I'll get to that later, my son, who, when I told him about this, said, "Great, our furnace is going to be going out one of these years, and it'd really be neat to have PACE in place." And now that Chris and I moved to Lincoln and we bought a 20-year-old house, you might have me saying, "I'd love to have this in place when my furnace goes out." So I've given you this handout, and it gives you the first... It tells you a little bit. LB 1012, which authorized PACE, passed by vote of 45 to 0 in the Nebraska Legislature. A lot of bipartisan support. Four not voting. I'm not sure if they weren't there that day or why they didn't. And then LB 625, passed in 2017, was a 40 to 3 vote. And LB 1012 authorized cities, and then LB 625 now authorized counties to use the PACE program as well. Earlier, you mentioned, Councilman Eskridge, three wins. I'd like to say four wins. Win, 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 win. First of all, I think business wins because, first of all, it's going to create more jobs as people go to purchasing various ways of energy efficiency, which could be new mechanical things like furnaces, or it could even be insulating a building, those kinds of things. And it's going to make businesses more profitable because if you can save energy, your business will be more profitable. It's going to help Lincoln Electric System because the more energy efficiency you have in the buildings in Lincoln, the less you have to deal with these peaks that happen all of a sudden. It will provide healthier living environments. When you have a properly insulated business office or a house or whatever, it's actually a healthier place. And then it's a commitment to sustainability because it will certainly create a reduction in greenhouse gases. My vision eventually would be kind of a one-stop shopping where a citizen sees a need. Then there's an energy audit, and I think this would be a good opportunity for the city to work with LES. And in fact, in the...
One minute.
One minute? Wow. Okay. Citizen sees a need. There's an energy audit. No upfront investment. The raises of property taxes, yes, but it lowers the energy bill. A better living environment tied to the property. So my wish and my suggestion is to the council to look at this as a pilot project with commercial because it makes a lot of sense for commercial. But then simply to use that as a pilot to go to residential where you're going to see great acceptance and enthusiasm from citizens because I think that's where it's going to make the biggest impact. But again, thank you for bringing it to commercial properties. And, you know, tell your staff to make this work. It's a good idea, and it can work. It's win, 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 win. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold just a moment. Are there questions for this testifier? Councilwoman Lamb.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator, for being here. I appreciate actually having someone who made the bill a priority because sometimes with testifiers, in fact, a lot of times with testifiers, I refrain from asking questions, wanting to encourage the average citizen to come and testify in front of us, not discourage that. You, on the other hand, sir, are used to questions.
Oh, yeah. And I asked a lot of questions.
So I appreciate you being here. So I had a couple of questions that have just occurred to me. Is there any interaction between this and something that is, for instance, a TIF project?
I don't see any natural tie on that. Although, commercial development, and this can be for new development or it can be to upgrade existing development. So I would see that people in a TIF district or any other district would look at this as a potential way to get energy efficiency upfront.
But you don't... There isn't any problem with repayment if there's a TIF on the project. I guess that's really what I'm concerned with. It was when we have TIF projects, we have a natural valuation increase, and this would be separate from that.
I think it would be separate, but I can't say for sure.
Okay.
Good question, though, and I think that's one of the things you need to ask your staff.
Thank you. The other question I have is the... It said there will be... Oh, the taxes will increase, but of course, the energy use will decrease. So the cost will decrease. But so let's say you have a commercial building in particular, and you... The folks use an awful lot of energy, and so they have an audit, and they put this in place. But they sell the building five years later. And now the building is purchased by someone who maybe their company doesn't use as much energy. Maybe they're doing a warehouse or whatever it is they're doing. In that case, isn't that tenant actually still paying off?
Oh, yes. Yeah. It's a tax. It's added to the property taxes. So... And I think that's one of the advantages. The tax goes with the property and not, for example, with Ken Har, who's 75 years old. So, yeah, it increases the taxes.
Okay.
The property tax.
So the person that's paying it off is not necessarily the person that reaps the initial benefit, if you will?
Well, the way I would look at it is, when you install something that increases energy efficiency, that's an ongoing... Yes, it's going to benefit everybody who owns that building in the future. And in fact, when you look at... Actually, savvy people now who are buying houses see that the cost of... And I'm talking about residential, but this could also be commercial. That it's not just mortgage and insurance that you're paying, but also energy is a huge cost. It's an ongoing one. And with this kind of financing, eventually, the loan's paying off. But you keep getting the energy efficiency advantage of what happened upfront.
Thank you.
Yeah. But you can't escape the tax bill.
Other questions for this testifier? Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you very much.
Next testifier, please.
Hi. I'm Moni Yousiz, M-O-N-I, Yousiz, U-S-A-S-Z. I'm co-leader of the Lincoln Citizens Climate Lobby. CCL is a national organization with representatives in nearly every congressional district. Thank you for considering this program, and thank you, Councilwoman Christiansen, for bringing it to the council's attention. Approving PACE is an important bipartisan step this council can take that will cut greenhouse gas emissions, conserve energy, and support businesses. In fact, decisions like this may be some of the most important decisions this council makes. We read in the papers almost daily about present and future impacts of global warming or climate change. Three major hurricanes last year damaged swaths of Texas, Florida, and all of Puerto Rico. This summer, serious long-term flooding has damaged southern and eastern states, and record heat, drought, and fire are laying waste in the West. Last year, Phoenix had 25 days of temperatures of 110 degrees or higher. This year, the city is already up to 18. A cousin whose daughter used to live in Phoenix said it was often too hot in the summer for the grandkids to play on the playground equipment after 10:00 a.m. California fire officials are facing the prospects of an ever-extending fire season. Their worst fire seasons used to be in September and October. Now they're seeing huge fires in July and August as well. High heat exacerbates drought, which helps pave the way for big fires. I have a nephew-in-law who is stationed in Idaho with a fire crew. So far this year... Well, he's been gone since April and doesn't expect to get back until the end of October. So far this year, he's fought fires in Idaho, Arizona, Montana, and who knows where he will be sent next. I worry about him all, every day. With three devastating hurricanes, extreme wildfires, hail, flooding, tornadoes, and drought, the United States tallied a record-high bill last year for weather-related disasters, $306 billion, information found on all major news outlets in January. But this is not hopeless. We can do something here. On the local level, we can support the PACE program. We can continue funding LEAP. We can conserve energy at home and work toward bipartisan solutions to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hi. I'm Marilyn McNabb, 1701 West Rose Street. I wrote things down so I could be very quick, but I'm so tempted to try and invent a win-win, win-win-win proposal for you. But I won't do that. I'm here today with Citizens Climate Lobby to support the PACE program because I worry about climate change. When I read the recent news about energy and climate, I see three themes. First, the effects of climate change are arriving much faster than climate scientists' models have predicted. Second, the federal government is stepping away from taking action that could slow climate change. Third, at the state and city levels, elected leaders are stepping up with initiatives like PACE that express the values of both political parties. Quote, "Is voluntary, market-based, it doesn't impose any significant cost to taxpayers," said the sponsor of the 35th state PACE law passed this summer in Pennsylvania. It also had broad bipartisan support, like all the other PACE laws have had. Improving the energy efficiency of commercial buildings in Lincoln and increasing the use of clean energy by making loans for upfront costs through a PACE program is a constructive response to all three of these themes. A survey by the Department of Energy done last year reported about 520 million in investments through the state commercial PACE program, the different states that are doing it. That's a start, but the big opportunities are ahead. Buildings that are energy-efficient are more productive, valuable, healthy, and safe for the people who occupy them and the planet. I stole that list of virtues from the Rocky Mountain Institute in Colorado, who've been working on energy efficiency since the 1980s. They say in the U.S., about 60% of electricity generated is consumed by buildings. As the biggest uses of power, buildings can literally make or break the critical transition to a low-carbon energy future. On July 21st, 17 prominent climate researchers went public with a paper to be published in the journal Atmospheric Physics and Chemistry. It said that unless greenhouse gas emissions are reduced much faster than are currently planned, New York, London, and Shanghai and other coastal cities could be uninhabitable in as little as 50 years with roughly 10 feet of sea level rise resulting from a 2-degree Celsius increase in global temperatures. Previously, 2 degrees was thought acceptable. Time is the essence, they said. A month later, on August 21st, a second major report on climate was issued that carried the same conclusions, also pointing to the unstoppable events of loss of ice in West Antarctica and sea level rise between 3 and 5 meters, displacing millions of people worldwide. I'll limit my quote from that report to one sentence. Irreversible adverse climate change on the global scale now occurring is an existential risk to human civilization. I don't use the word existential risk very much, and so I looked it up on Google, but I did not get the reassurance that I was hoping for. I thought maybe it wasn't as bad as it sounded. But the definition was a threat to humanity's survival. So thanks for what I hope is starting the PACE program here today. And there's no silver bullet for climate change, but this is an important contribution. Questions?
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello. My name is Marjorie Willakee, M-A-R-J-O-R-I-E-W-I-L-L-E-K-E. And I live at 6750 Shadow Ridge Road in Lincoln. I'm here to testify in favor of the proposed PACE ordinance. Two weeks ago, I wrote to members of the city council and also to Mayor Beitler outlining my reasons for supporting PACE as a finance tool that combines promoting energy efficiency and savings with economic development. I'm going to talk about some different things in what I put in the letter, however. To date, PACE has been approved in 34 states, including Nebraska and the District of Columbia. Nebraska's first PACE project is in Omaha, where a seven-story office building will be converted to a 90-room hotel in downtown Omaha. The $3.4 million PACE loan is being used to add insulation, efficient lighting, electrical improvements, water-saving bathroom fixtures, and efficient heating and cooling systems. Let me emphasize that no part of the loan comes from public funds. Yet the loan pays for building improvements that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. As you know, these emissions contribute to extreme weather events such as tornadoes and floods, an increase in droughts and forest fires, and an increase in health risks. Finally, as I stated in my letter, it may seem like PACE will have little impact on big international challenges such as climate change. However, I sincerely believe that all actions count. We must use every opportunity to mitigate the effects of climate change. Actions are needed at the local level as well as the state, national, and international levels. This is one opportunity for Lincoln to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much.
Barry, B-A-R-R-I-E, Marchant, M-A-R-C-H-A-N-T, 611 North 26th Street. And I want you to know that the Holy Hamlet does not have troubles with its streets. We are just fine. Thank you very much. Last week, John McCain died. In reactions that I've read by his, both his supporters and his opponents, the attributes most often commented on is that he was very courageous and that they appreciated his willingness to put partisanship aside in order to do what's best for the country. I was particularly struck by someone that I don't know, a guy named Cody Keenan. It's all right. I'd like to read what I read from him on the Internet. He said, "Met John McCain once. I was a 22-year-old Senate intern waiting for an elevator. The doors opened and he and another GOP senator were inside. I apologized and said I'd wait for the next one, but McCain told me to hop on. Who do you work for?" He asked. "Ted Kennedy, sir." "He's a good man," McCain said. "Without him, we're lost." The other senator scoffed in disgust and got off the elevator at the next floor. While he was still in earshot, McCain raised his voice a little and said, 'Don't mind him, he's an asshole.'" That's the time I met John McCain. You know, whenever I have attended city council member, this, these things, I have been astounded at the number of decisions that you all make that are bipartisan, that are unanimous or six to one, and tonight has been absolutely no different. I, there was one vote that I would consider somewhat partisan, and I understand it completely, and I frankly think you guys are living up to John McCain's image. You have reached out, you have listened to us, and I appreciate that. I, I'm going to assume that you are putting on your bipartisan heads as you address this, as you think about this, and I really appreciate it. I appreciate you for bringing this up, Roy, and I appreciate the rest of you for actively listening to it and encouraging the mayor's office to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Marchant? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Good evening. My name's Ken Winston. My last name's still W-I-N-S-T-O-N, and I have copy, how many copies should I, do you want?
One for each member and one for us.
Okay. So eight total? Okay. I think I have that number. Well, first of all, I want to thank Councilman Christian, Christensen for introducing this ordinance, and I guess, as Senator Hara indicated, this is a true example of bipartisanship. I mean, this is, or a nonpartisanship that, 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 that this is an issue that, that transcends any kind of party issue. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of Nebraska Interfaith Power and Light, which is an interfaith, nonpartisan organization that engages in education, advocacy, and outreach related to climate change and care of creation. Climate change, as you've heard already this evening, is the most important moral issue of the 21st century, with a potential to impact every person on the planet. We're seeing more and more evidence of climate change with more extreme weather events becoming common occurrences. Just last week, and actually it may still be happening, Hurricane Lane dumped biblical amounts of rain on parts of Hawaii, and as previously mentioned, Hurricanes Harvey, Irma, and Maria unleashed their destructive forces on Houston, Florida, and Puerto Rico. The reason that this is, this is significant to people of faith is because the fact that the most severe impacts of climate change are felt by the Earth's poorest citizens, the least of these among us. Our faith traditions command, command us to stand up for our most vulnerable citizens, our most vulnerable brothers and sisters. For example, the poorest people in, in Houston and Puerto Rico were most likely to live in housing that could not withstand the forces of floods and hurricanes in areas that were vulnerable to flooding. Some parts of Puerto Rico are still struggling to rebuild, and some areas still have not had electricity restored nearly a year later. Closer to home, we've had record-breaking amounts of rain just last week in Omaha and across the river in Iowa. They had six inches of rain in Omaha and 10 inches or more in Iowa, and that's, those were record-breaking amounts. In 2012, on the other hand, we had a record-breaking drought in Nebraska, and I know that I listened with interest to your, your decision about MUD and the fact that we're, now Lincoln's looking at buying water from, from Omaha. Well, that's going to have to happen sooner if we have another drought like that, and even that may not be enough. As Councilwoman Barrett indicated, we're going to need to be thinking about how we get our water and how we provide water for our city, because climate change is going to have impacts on things like that. So I know that sometimes the council has difficult decisions to make, but I don't think this is going to be one of those, because I think this is one where there's widespread support. It's good for business, it's good for people, and it's good for the environment. And the document that I passed out, one of the things that I wanted to point out is, is it points out the fact that there's a new program that just began in Nebraska. There's a little picture of the state of Nebraska and the fact that, that the Omaha PACE program started this year. And actually, on the, the second page, it's, there's, the map shows areas where there are PACE programs across the country, where there are active programs with funded projects. So that gives you an idea of, of areas where the projects have been, have been funded. Now, one of the other things that, and I won't go through it, obviously it's fairly easy to read and, and it would be insulting for me to, to read, to read it to you, but I guess the highlight that I would mention is just the fact that all the things, as Senator Hara indicated, this is a win-win for everybody. I don't know if I can get to four wins, but, one minute. Yes, I know. Thank you, Councilman. But there are major increases in job creation in the last two years, major increases in investment, huge reductions in greenhouse gases, in greenhouse gases, energy savings, and increases in solar capacity. Actually, I think I got to five. So, so anyway, I'm the new champion.
Big winner.
But I guess the, the thing is, there are lots of financing tools. There's no requirement that somebody has to use PACE, and as the Law Department indicated, it has to be a willing, willing parties, and there have to be, everybody has to sign off on it. And it's been used successfully in lots of places, so, and it also has the, so we, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can turn to other people, to their experience on how to make this work. And I guess the, as Senator Hara suggested, this program should be a beginning step, and the city should be planning to expand it. Could I, do one?
Quickly, really quick, really quick.
Okay. I'd like to encourage the council to adopt this ordinance and for the city of Lincoln to quickly state, take steps to make this program a reality so that the people of Lincoln can take advantage of it. Thank you.
Very well done. Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Winston. Next testifier.
Hello, my name's Matt Gregory. I live at 632 North 25th Street. I'll be brief, as I think we're all tired of winning. I submitted comments on the PACE ordinance a couple of weeks ago, as, when it was scheduled for August 6, and I thought I would be gone during that time, so I won't go into that again. So I want to first thank you to the council members who got back to me on that. I want to thank Councilmember Christensen for introducing the ordinance, and I'd like to thank the mayor's office for listening. So those comments were on behalf of Nebraska Wildlife Federation, which I represent today. I also work for Nebraska Farmers Union, and they also support the PACE ordinance. Nebraska Farmers Union's office is on 13th and South, but we won't get into that. Those are my comments.
That was, yeah, the 13th Street. Questions for this testifier? Mr. Gregory, thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
I didn't expect to testify again, but you have me now. Pat Anderson, C. Fuentes, 1500 South 11th Street. I would also encourage you to pass this resolution because I work a lot with Neighbor Works in Lincoln, I work a lot with the landlords in the area, particularly south of downtown. And when this first passed, the unicameral, I was really excited about it. I didn't know it would take so long to implement. And, and I asked landlords if this would be a tool that they thought they could use, and they, and many of them did, said yes, it, it would come in very handy for older buildings, because they didn't feel that they could upgrade especially expensive items like windows, because they would have to raise the, the cost of their rent so much that they, at that time, they would have been out of the market. They would still be, and it would also raise rents of tenants, and we, and we already have a problem with affordable housing. So I look forward to PACE being passed and being implemented so that commercial buildings can take advantage of it, and then I also look forward to it expanding to residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hi, Edison McDonald, 3921 Eagle Ridge Road, and I've already talked to you and sent in comments about this. I just wanted to go over a few extra points. Number one, it's highly unlikely that you would ever see a project that could turn over like Councilwoman Lamb you were concerned about. These projects have some of the, especially solar projects and energy upgrades have some of the steadiest cash flows that I've ever seen. I worked on solar development, and, you know, farmers love nothing more than to talk about how this is going to affect the bottom line over time, and really, these sorts of projects just have some really solid, steady marches up. And if you'd be interested in going over those sorts of numbers, I'd love to talk to you more about that. Number two, two, in terms of the concerns about, well, how tested out is this? This has been in over 38 states, I'm sorry, 30 states, produced over $688 million through 1,760 projects and produced 10,300 jobs across our nation. And in conclusion, I just wanted to thank you, Councilman Christensen, for bringing this forward, and for all of you for your consideration and for this discussions that I've had. I hope that you really keep in mind that this is a first step. Moving to residential is undoubtedly the next step that we need to look at taking. That will go and make the city into a newly energized and renewed sort of haven. I know, for instance, we've got a fantastic example where renewable energy has massively benefited our state. Broken Bow, you know, small quaint little town, but their downtown is revitalized, and I think part of that at least is due to the increased renewed energy that has come out of their giant solar project there. This is really going to go and help make sure that the private sector is able to go and contribute to that more effectively, and if you move towards residential, it'll make sure that the average citizen can go, move towards that, move towards making sure that they lay down roots and invest in our community for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next, please.
I'm Laurel Van Ham, L-A-U-R-E-L-V-A-N, space, capital H-A-M. I want to preface my remarks by saying I'm always in awe that I have the right and the privilege to speak on occasions like this, but if I appear to be shaking, it's because the place where I was sitting is in the air conditioning and my teeth are chattering. Maybe the place to start with energy efficiency is the air conditioning in this room.
Duly noted.
Same thought.
The climate, the climates of our planet are experiencing significant and by and large harmful changes as a result of our extensive use of fossil fuels. A steadily increasing majority of Nebraska citizens agree with the strong consensus of scientists that this is a situation that needs immediate attention. Personally, I believe that our generation has a moral imperative to decrease the emission of greenhouse gases, but somehow this has become a partisan issue based on a myth, the myth that addressing climate change will be harmful to our economy. The fact is that strategies that decrease emissions and increase energy efficiency actually create more well-paying jobs, improve public health, and help grow the economy. I know that this body generally votes along party lines, reflecting the particular interests and values of your differing constituents, and that is part of our democratic process. But I also know, and you have demonstrated tonight, that you're able to come together when there's a shared concern, and when there's a solution that honors values across the political spectrum. The establishment of a PACE district is just such a solution. I'm just, I'm extraordinarily proud of the city that I live in, and I'm proud of the way we do things when the council's able to act in unison for the common good. Mr. Christensen, I'm grateful to you for introducing this win-win proposal, and now I look forward to the unanimous and enthusiastic support of the rest of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Ham. Any questions for this testifier? Thank you again. Mr. Peterson.
My name's Chris Peterson, 5206 South 53rd Street. I'm appearing before you as a representative of Pace Sage Capital. I was hoping, and I think I might have achieved it, to back clean up here and maybe answer any questions before you move on. I want to start briefly, though, and just thank Senator Hara for being here. If he had not prioritized the legislation in 2016, we may not be here this evening with, having this discussion. I want to thank the city staff for the time and effort they've put into this. I want to repeat my willingness to meet them at any time, to visit about the practical applications and, and the implementation of the program, and, and how best to do that to meet the needs of all stakeholders. I want to thank Councilman Christensen for introducing the resolution, or the ordinance, I should say. I want to thank several members here who've asked questions and had conversations with me here in the council chamber or over the phone, and including, even though she's not here tonight, I have spoken to Councilwoman Raybold over the phone in the last few weeks. I want to just quickly address the issue of banks and first mortgages, and I would like to share with you that this legislation was put together after lengthy discussions and negotiation with several stakeholders that participated in 2016, including the Nebraska bankers, and it was only after many hours of negotiation that the Nebraska Bankers Association dropped their opposition to the legislation, and that was after we, we worked out that PACE does not become a lien on the property unless there is a default, and only becomes a lien when there's a default, and, and that's very important to recognize that it does not jump ahead of a first mortgage otherwise. And when it does become a lien, it's only for the missed payment, it's not for the entirety of the loan, and so the loan does not accelerate in a, in a default situation. I might also offer with respect to another comment that was made about the sale of a property that has a PACE loan, and there have been properties around the country that have sold after a PACE financing has been done on, on that property, and it has been a mixed bag as to whether the PACE loan is paid off at the time of the sale as the property is transferred, or whether the new property owner goes ahead and, and takes that PACE obligation and continues to make that payment. That becomes part of the negotiation between the property owner and the, and the new property owner, the buyer and the, and the seller. Then, we've had a lot of great testimony tonight, and I really appreciate everyone who came forward and, and made their comments, and it made me think about, there's really, this is a dynamic tool to have in, in the city's toolbox, both from the perspective of it being an economic development tool that encourages energy efficiency, but also an energy efficiency tool that encourages economic development, and, and so it, it's really a dynamic tool in that way. Be happy to answer any other questions that the council might have.
Questions for this testifier? Councilman Camp.
Yes, Mr. Peterson. I think through the testimony tonight, pardon me, it is chilly up here. Bundling up here. No, I appreciate the clarification on the, the precedence there and that the first lien or the first mortgage holder would have the opportunity, would be participating so that those interests are protected. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to echo Councilman Camp's, because those were some of my concerns about how the loan would work, and the questions that were answered earlier were very helpful to me. Thank you. Are there other questions for this testifier? Councilman Eskridge.
Yeah, we, we heard from Mr. McDonald about step two, I guess, residential. Is, does, does Omaha have residential, or are they just commercial as well?
No, it's only, only commercial, and what we have encouraged is that cities take the first step, as you're hopefully doing here with this ordinance, and put commercial in place. Let's see how that works, and then consider moving on to residential. Only three states in the country have residential PACE, and so it, it, there's, there, unlike commercial PACE where there's a couple dozen states that have it in place, and so I would encourage you to walk before you run, but I would also share with you that my company does not involve itself in the residential side of PACE, and there are other folks out there around the country that do, and I'm sure they'd be interested in having those conversations.
Does our statute allow for residential?
The statute does, and you would need to tweak the ordinance. This ordinance is focal pointed around commercial. There's, there are some different parameters and issues involving residential PACE that you'll want to dig into with your eyes wide open before you would move that direction. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Peterson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item? Do you guys want to rebuttal? You want to have questions of staff before we, let's go. So we're at the end of public hearing for ordinances and third reading.
Yes. So we can vote on item 7A. It was introduced by Christensen.
Moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Christensen, second by Gaylord Bird. Discussion?
I have a motion to amend. Number one, I hereby move that by adding section six, line 23, after the word provided as follows, "Except that the implementation of this ordinance shall be delayed for a period of not to exceed 120 days for the development of procedures, policies, forms, and other actions necessary to implement this ordinance. The mayor shall issue an executive order declaring implementation..." issue an executive order declaring implementation of this ordinance at any time deemed appropriate by the mayor, after fif, after 15 days and prior to 120 days after the passage of this ordinance."
Second.
A motion by Christianson, second by Eskridge to amend. Discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll on the motion to amend?
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
And now we'll return to the original motion. Council, yes, Councilman Gaylord Baird.
I'd like to offer a motion to amend number two.
Okay.
And this motion is to add another item in section 3EIIH, which is basically the list of things that would disqualify someone from, a project from qualifying for pace. This would make it so that if an applicant has any unresolved code violations, that those would need to be resolved first before they could qualify for this financing. And this is something we've discussed, and have the support of the, the applicant.
So, a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird?
Second.
A second by Councilwoman Christianson. Any discussion of the second? A motion to amend. Councilwoman Lamb?
Sure, I just wanted to ask a question for clarity. This seems to read like if there's been a notice of violation related to the project identified. So I'm guessing like if there's been violation of what, the, there's no cooling, or there's no electricity in the building, or?
It, it meant the, the application, the, the location. If you want to go ahead and clarify?
Yeah, if there, I mean, we would be talking about existing buildings, really. But I, I guess theoretically, it could, it's anything in the Lincoln Municipal Code. I think we're thinking about typically, building code violations in an existing building. And so if there are those kinds of problems that exist, they need to get those resolved before they'll become eligible.
So, pretty much any violation?
Correct.
But not just one that's?
It could be a zoning violation, it could be, it could be other things as well.
So, if there was a person who had a, a building, and it was on the property, on the problem property list, and they thought, this will help me get that fixed, they've got to get the violations taken care of before they would be eligible to get the money?
That's correct.
To fix the building?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. That's my, any other questions for council on this motion to amend? Hearing no other questions, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Wait.
Should I wait?
Yeah. Meeting went a little long.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And now to the original motion. Yeah, I think we'll be fine without him.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And now we go to ordinances on third reading?
Yes. Item 8A, change of zone 18020, application of Scottish Rite Temple for a change from O1 Office to B4, Lincoln Center Business District with landmark overlay at 332 Centennial Mall South. Introduced by Gaylord Baird.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Christianson. Discussion of 8A.
Hearing no discussion, do we go to the next item, or we?
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Yes. Lamb?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Five to zero. Good lord. All right. Item 8B?
Yes.
Change of zone 18021. This is the application of the Planning Department for a change from O1 Office to B4 Lincoln Center Business District on property at 330 South 16th Street and 1610 L Street. Introduced by Gaylord Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gaylord Baird, second by Christianson. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask you to call the roll.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items 9A through C. Ordinances on first reading are items 10A through C. Our pending list date certain are items 11A and B. They will both come off for September 10. Pending list is items 12A through C. Any wish, anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time, since it is open microphone.
Tonight is an open mic night. Would anyone like to address the city council? Jamie, I'm looking at you. Do you?
No, that's great. Good.
Good. Your timing's perfect. Yes, motion and a second to adjourn, and you?
One discussion, nine items. I'm sorry.
Can't discuss.
I had to go to the restroom. I just, post me down is in favor of the pace.
Everything, yeah. It's okay.
We didn't take a break.
I thought we would, yeah, I thought we could power through, and that didn't go well.
I couldn't make it.
Would you call the roll, please, on adjournment?
Camp?
Yes.
Christianson?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Consider us adjourned.